2011 City Council Meeting to Order. First order of business is roll call and determination of the quorum. Charlene?
Nordstrom.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Sasso.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, Charlene. Next order of business is invocation and we'll recognize Pastor Dale Barcher. Dale?
Please stand. Let's pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us. Even on those days when we are unlovable, your grace shines through. In the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and whiteness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them this evening. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Rapid City. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Barcher, coming tonight. Next order of business is canvassing the votes from the, is the adoption of the agenda. Got ahead of myself. We will be moving item 77, changing it to be 103A. Item 77 will become 103A and will be moved after the executive session. As the notice of lean regarding Jackson Springs. Do we have any additions to the agenda? We'll recognize Alderman Wright. Alderman, Jerry Wright?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to do a report brief on the trip to Washington last week. And there Alderman, or wherever you feel appropriate.
We'll call that item 76B. Any additions to tonight's agenda? Any other additions? We have a motion for approval and a second, a motion by Davis and a second by Roberts for approval with the two changes noted. Any discussion seen on all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And now we move on to item number one. Alderman Davis, would you read this into the agenda for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Resolution Number 2011-120, emergency resolution canvassing the vote for the special municipal election held September 13th, 2011. Whereas there was held in the city of Rapid City, South Dakota on Tuesday, the 13th day of September 2011, the special municipal election of the city of Rapid City, South Dakota, for the purpose of electing one alderman of said city. And whereas said election, the total number of votes cast for the office of alderman were as follows. For the office of alderman, second ward to fill the remainder of the vacant term. Tim Rose, 45 votes total. Marla Murphy, 97 votes total. Jeanette Durle, 88 votes total. And Steve Laurenti, 317 votes total. Now therefore be it resolved by the city of Rapid City as follows. Steve Laurenti having received a majority of all votes cast for the office of alderman for the second ward for a term to expire in 2012, is hereby declared to be the duly elected to the office of alderman of the city of Rapid City for the second ward, and for the term as henceforth set forth, and is entitled to qualify for and hold said office as provided by law. Be it further resolved that this resolution is found and determined to be necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety, and for the support of the municipal government and its existing public institutions. Wherefore an emergency exists and this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage and publication according to law. Dated this 13th of September 2011, signed Mayor Sam Quaker. And I would offer a motion to accept that resolution.
Everyone else? And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we have the swearing in of Steve Laurenti.
I see Laurenti.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same?
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely?
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion?
Or for the purpose of evasion.
That I will faithfully?
That I will faithfully.
And impartially perform?
And impartially perform.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of ward two often?
Of ward two often.
Rapid City Council?
Rapid City Council.
Rapid City, South Dakota. According to the law?
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
While Steve is taking his seat, we will, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the September 6th, 2011 regular council meeting and the September 7th, 2011 special council meeting. We have a motion by Doyle, a second by Roberts. Did I get that right, I think? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Both motions passed. All right. And we will move on to a words and recognition. The first one, I will move the chair back over to the mayor at the podium for the veteran of the month. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you Alderman Davis. And if the ward three Alderman could come up, please. Alderman Wright and Alderman Davis. Next order of business is veteran of the month. Gordon Lees, would you please come forward? And you can bring your better half with you if you'd like.
No you won't. You can come up here. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we are pleased to present the September 2011 Veteran of the Month recognition to Gordon Lees. Gordon enlisted in the United States Coast Guard on December 8, 1941, as a 17-year-old senior. He was sworn in on December 22 and assigned to captain of the port in Los Angeles. On December 24, Japanese submarine torpedoed the SS Absaroka off of Port Vicente, California. The ship was ordered to the rescue with a coxswain and two apprentice seamen, one being Gordon. Upon arrival, they removed one dead crewman and six survivors from the ship. In February 1942, while assigned to a patrol boat in Santa Barbara, Gordon and crew were ordered to intercept the Japanese submarine that was bombarding an oil refinery at Elwood just north of their location. Fortunately, the submarine was gone when they arrived as they had only two Springfield rifles and two pistols. As a petty officer attached to the USS LST 381 from 1943 to 1944, Gordon helped rescue wounded and burned survivors from the SS James W. Marshall. Gordon was commended for his actions at Anseaux, Italy, and while in Normandy, France, from June 6, 1944 to July 24, 1944, under enemy attack. He helped load 265 seriously wounded soldiers and get them to safety. Gordon received a special citation for these actions. In 1946, he enlisted in the reserve and was assigned to Los Alamos Naval Air Station in California. During his military career, he showed the true spirit of the American soldier. He was thrown into rough circumstances as a boy but showed the heroism of a man. Scheduled for discharge in August 1950, the Korean attack in June of that year extended his enlistment. He retired in 1984 at Ellsworth as a contract specialist GS9. He's a life member of the VFW Rushmore Plaza 1273 and DAV Chapter 3 in Rapid City. Thank you very much for your service.
Before I turn the microphone over to Gordon for a few moments, I wanted to, everyone, he's wearing one of his original uniforms. What year did you, what year did you get this uniform?
Late 44.
Late 44. And it looks great. Looks as good as you.
I'd like to thank Kay for nominating me for this. There are a lot of vets that deserve this, and I thank you for honoring me.
Well, be it a fellow veteran and senior vice of 1273. I'm very proud of you and your service and on behalf of Rapid City, congratulations. And on behalf of the country, thank you.
Thank you Gordon, and Ward Three is very proud to have you as a member of our ward. Thank you for your service.
Matthew, come on up. Captain Katie, if you'd come up too. And council leadership also.
I'd like to read an executive proclamation. This is whereas on Tuesday, September 13, 2011, box elder citizen Matthew Haybear exemplified what it means to be a good Samaritan. And while at a consignment store in Rapid City, Matthew found a money bag with $3,550 in cash that was dropped on the way to be deposited to the bank. And Matthew immediately did the right thing by reporting it to authorities so that it could be returned to its rightful owner. And in a world where morality is often discarded and greed prevails, this demonstration of honesty and integrity is refreshing and an example that should be recognized and emulated by all citizens. Now therefore I, Sam Quaker, Mayor of Rapid City, do hereby proclaim September 13 as Matthew Haybear Day in Rapid City in honor of our honest neighbor and friend, and we further encourage everyone to observe this day with appropriate activities. Thank you very much for your service to our country and to our community.
I definitely thank God for the ability to serve my community. Thank you for the mentors that have been in my life to help me continue, and I look forward to continuing to serve my community in any way, shape, or form I can. Thank you.
Brian, if you'd come up. Charity is the council's liaison to the Civic Center and asked her to join us too. Brian, we just wanted to take a moment to thank you and your crew for stepping up to the plate in the aftermath of the tragedy that our community experienced on August 2. And it was the evening of the shootings or the morning after that I talked to council leadership, and there was agreement amongst them and amongst the council that we should offer the Civic Center for the services if the families so chose. And they did, and you just did an outstanding job of putting everything together. And I wanted to thank you for all that you did, and I know that it's not just you, it's also your crew. But as the leader of your organization, we just want to take a moment and say thank you. So I'd like to offer this on behalf of the mayor and council. We take the pleasure in presenting this certificate to Brian Maliski and the entire Rushmore Plaza Civic Center staff to acknowledge their exceptional efforts and outstanding service during the funeral services of officers Ryan McCandless and Nick Armstrong. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of the Rushmore Plaza Civic Center, I'd like to thank everyone for being here and especially Charity. It's extra special. And I wish we could do more for the community, and we hope to do more for the community in the future. So, thank you, Mayor.
If you could come on up.
On behalf of the mayor and the city council, we also want to thank you for the tremendous effort that you and your department put in in the aftermath of the shootings on August 2, and also in the aftermath of the loss of Trampus Hesfitts firefighter from Buffalo Gap who lost his life in the Hot Springs area. And we just want to thank you for the tremendous support that you provided to his community and also to the community, to this community. So we just want to take a moment to thank you. I know that it's a team effort, and I know you well and that you're going to say that it's your crew that really did this, but as a leader, I want to thank you also for your, for your efforts. Thank you very much.
You took the words out of my mouth. I will only accept this on behalf of all the members of the Rapid City Fire Department, and I also want to really give it up to the Rapid City Police Department for everything they do. And if it was to happen to our organization tomorrow, we know that we would count on the 142 members of the police department to support us like we did them, and we hope we never have to do it again, but if need be, we would do it for each other again in a heartbeat. So, thank you.
like to say, take a moment to let everyone know that we do plan on recognizing everyone that was involved in the assistance in the Anamosa-Greenbrier neighborhood after the shootings. And now that the DCI report has been completed, Chief Allenor is working with council leadership and myself on, on appropriate recognitions for the neighbors involved. So that will be coming forward soon, and I just wanted everyone to know that that is
Charles Jaeger here tonight? Okay, we'll recognize him next time. Alderman Davis, would you read 4A into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number CC 091911-04.4, confirm the appointment of Terry Walsterstorf as the Public Works Director. Pauline, would you swear in Terry? Ah, and I would move to approve that confirmation. We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Roberts. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I carried away with the reading there, Mayor.
I, Terry Walsterstorf?
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear?
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend?
The Constitution of the United States? And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota?
And the Constitution of the State of South Dakota? Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith?
And allegiance to the same? That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely?
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation?
Or for the purpose of evasion?
Or for the purpose of evasion?
That I will faithfully and impartially? Perform the duties of the office? Of Public Works Director?
Of Public Works Director?
Within the office of the Public Works Department? Rapid City, South Dakota?
Rapid City, South Dakota?
According to the law?
According to the law?
And to the best of my ability?
And to the best of my ability. So help me God. Thank you.
Terry, would you like to say a few words and introduce yourself briefly to the community?
I sure will. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'm looking so forward and so excited for it. I'm looking forward to working with each of you guys and gals to do some great things for the community in a customer-friendly way and an open way. So, like I say, looking forward to getting here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we look forward to working with you, and your first day will be October 13.
Yes, it will.
Next order of business is general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns of the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on an issue not on the agenda except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. We have a couple of speaker request forms under general public comment. We'll first recognize Jason Etherington representing Soccer Rapid City. Jason, identify yourself for the record, and the floor is yours.
My name is Jason Etherington, and I am with Soccer Rapid City. I'm the new director of Soccer Complex Development. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. Just briefly, several of you were at the meeting in December of last year where our organization asked for funding, release of funds for the project. Unfortunately, it was turned down. I want you to know that action still continues on that project. I took over. At that point, I got involved in December. Through some leadership changes, I took that position in April and really have been working to put together a group of people focused on keeping this discussion pure. It's about soccer, it's about kids, it's about Rapid City. Along those lines, in my review of past issues, one of the things that we still struggle with today is clarity on fundraising. We want to get release of funds. We want to understand what our goals are to reach, reach those funds. And so I'm hoping I can get some feedback from you guys, whether individually or as a group, opportunities to discuss the project. You know, one of the things that, why I felt like I needed to come and talk tonight was I'd heard rumors that our money was in jeopardy, that our 3.6 million that was still in holding was going to be was going to get used for other projects. I understand times are tough right now. Those monies are wanted for other projects, for other concerns on the budget, and I understand that. I would hope that our project could still have those monies, obviously, and also some discussion regarding the property that was donated. Doyle Estes donated for this project. And so hopefully, what I hope to get tonight is just out in front of you guys. I want to understand. I passed out business cards and my information, and I hope we can start a dialogue, again, individually or as a group, to help us identify some clear goals so we can finish this project. I think it's doable, and I'm hoping for your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll recognize Ethan Schmidt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Ethan Schmidt, I'm just talking on my own behalf, and I have a fourth grade daughter and a seventh grade son that play soccer. And you've heard of the soccer mom, well, I'm a soccer dad, and it's really a family affair. And I just wanted to emphasize the importance of the 80 acres donated by Mr. Estes, and we're looking, I guess, to see if the council is in favor of it or not. And it's huge for Rapid City and for the area. And I understand the documents show that if work has not begun on the site by May 31st of 2012, it'll kill this project with the 80 acres. And Jason is in charge, he's the point person, and he's just looking for some direction, some planning, and we wanted to come down and say aye this evening. Every community has a soccer league, and I was going to say it starts at age six, but the referee this last weekend at the tournament says age four to age 18. And there's RC YSL and Rushmore Club, and about 2,000 kids are involved in soccer. It's healthy, there's exercise, it builds endurance and gamesmanship, and respect, and coordination, and they interact as a team. It's been great for my kids, growing up in Pure. We didn't have soccer at that time, I won't go back and tell you how long ago that was, but soccer is just huge for the area. It's a good alternative to basketball and football, running and kicking. And there's also an adult, there's a men's league and a co-ed league of about 300 people to relieve the stress of those adults and for exercise purposes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Do we have any other speaker request forms on general public comment? Anybody else like to speak? If not, we will move on to the non-public hearings, items five through 77. And the first order of business will be to open public comment on items five through 55. Do we have a motion to do so? We have a motion by Mason and a second by Roberts to open public comment. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We do not have any speaker request forms on items five through 55. Is there anybody that would like to speak on any item from five through 55? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public comment? Motion by Brown, second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Would any council members or staff members like to remove any items five through 55, please? Hit your lights. We'll first go to Jerry Wright, Alderman Wright.
Item 23.
Okay, item 23. Alderman Mason.
Item 50.
Item 50. So far, we have 23 and 50. Any other items? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the balance of consent with the exception of 23 and 50? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Mason to approve items five through 55 with the exception of 23 and 50. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item 23. Alderman Brown, would you read this into the record for us?
Yes, Mayor. PW 091311-13, acknowledge report on consultant selection process review. Move to acknowledge the report.
We have a motion by Brown, second by Peterson to acknowledge the report, and we'll recognize Alderman Jerry Wright. Alderman Wright?
I just wanted to add for the best of the group that there have been two meetings that I've been at with the staff, Dale and his staff, to discuss this issue, and I think there's been some good progress made in changing, in particular, the forms and the process of how they're scored and so forth. But I do believe we have some more work to do, and we'll keep you updated. I just wanted to share that publicly with the entire council.
That's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. We do have a motion to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number 50.
Approve letting the 394-933-311 contract expire at year end. I move to approve.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Roberts to allow the 394-9300 or 311 contract to expire at year's end. Is there any discussion? Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had some time to review this item and think about it. It's obviously an item that I originally brought forward, and after discussing it with the mayor and some other persons, I absolutely agree that the rate that we're currently paying is not appropriate. However, the concept itself of consolidated streamlined communications for the city as an idea, I still stand by. And I guess I wanted to speak as to a warning to the effect that maybe we shouldn't throw the baby out with the bathwater here. My concern is, is I've seen it before the system was implemented and after, and while I agree that the rate is high, I would rather recommend that we want to be cautious in making the mayor's department and other city staff a call center. They have work to do on a daily basis, especially in the mayor's office. Having that the centralized location for the citizens of all of Rapid City to call into can be disruptive. So I would rather recommend maybe a substitute motion, if one of my colleagues would make it, that instead we let the contract expire and go out for RFP for a better deal. Thank you.
We'll recognize Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that this is about letting a contract expire, it's not about killing an idea. So I have no problem with you ringing the conversation. I think at $4 a caller, $7,200 a year, we ought to let this expire and get the conversation going a little bit later. Thank you.
We'll recognize Alderman Wright.
I agree the conversation should continue. I think there's a lot of people out there that don't know at times who to call here, and I think we need to look at ways of getting that information out to them better than we have in the past. I don't think the Yellow Pages or the Blue Pages are quite enough. I think we should do some research and find out how we can make it more public to the people, who they call when they have an issue, such as, you know, what day is my garbage picked up? What do I do if it's a dead dog in the street? You know, there's calls we all get, or someone gets. Anything we do, and I support going out and looking around and continuing the discussion.
Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment that we go ahead and let the contract expire, and as Alderman Mason suggests, that we then reevaluate what our needs are and offer an RFP at that time that's appropriate with those needs. And I'd like to hold the floor after a second, please.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Doyle. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Mason brought a great idea last year, and I don't think it's the system that failed as far as the fact that, I mean, we certainly are overpaying for it. I think as we move forward and we structure an RFP that goes out for bids to reevaluate this system, we need to look at the fact that we need to market what we're doing. I mean, this is, the best analogy I can have is putting a store along the interstate without an exit. You know, it sure is attractive, but you can't get there from here. And that's kind of what we've done. We've done the opposite. We created a mechanism and didn't tell anyone we had it. So I think what continued to happen is people continued to call departments and ask, how do I get to the mayor's office? And so I offer that not only as an amendment to this, a motion to that, amended motion, but also a thought process as we move forward, that we really look at the whole package, and that is to publicize what it is that this is doing and why, and how it is that the public is going to benefit from it. Because if we simply go out and get another RFP and put another machine in place and don't tell the people what it is and how to use it, we'll have the same result. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Davis, and we'll recognize Alderman Ron Sasso. Ron?
I would, I definitely agree with that. I think it's something that when we look at what we do, trying to, trying to make things a little more efficient, it also would be nice if we do have a call center, if we have all the calls going to one location, that it is also in Rapid City. So that would be another thing I would look for, so.
Thank you, and we'll recognize Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one suggestion, if I may get a clarification. Is this to be sent to the next legal and finance committee?
Alderman Nordstrom, as I understand it, the motion is to allow this contract to expire at the end of the year, and in the meantime, proceed with an RFP, see if we can get a better deal.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
And we recognize Alderman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I was supportive of this idea when it was first brought forward. I've been eyeing this for a long time and have seen that it was pretty expensive, so I'm glad that we're going to stop that. My suggestion would be that we keep the number, the phone number that we have, that we've already put out to people, that we keep it averaging seven calls a day. Even if you brought the calls down to, say, $2 apiece, that's still $14. I would see that with seven calls a day, I think if we work to centralize a referral sheet where phone numbers are, kind of try to duplicate in-house what the 311 or 211 people were doing, so that all of our people that answer phones have that sheet in front of them to give our citizens better service when they do call in, so that they do know who to call if there's a dead dog or whatever else that problem that we have. And incorporate it in-house, and then relook at it again when the number, the volume has really gone up, and then maybe could pay for outside source. But I will support the motion that we have. Thank you.
And we recognize Alderman Gary Brown. Gary? Is there any objections to calling the question? Seeing none, the question has been called, and we'll proceed directly to a vote. Everyone understands the motion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And we are now to the end of our consent, and we are now on items 56 through 77. Do we have a motion to open public comment on 56 through 77? A motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We do have several speaker request forms, and we'll first go to Jim Crisp from Red Dale Drive. Jim, if you could identify yourself for the record, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Jim Crisp, and I'm a property owner and a taxpayer here in Rapid City. You know, I'm, we elected you people to represent us and to conduct the city's business in a responsible manner. Surely you didn't wake up one day and just realize that those shortages have happened overnight. You had to see that the spending that you were doing was going to lead to where we find ourselves. I know sometimes it feels good to want to do all these wonderful things for everyone, but somebody has to pay for it someday. And the people have been strapped, the times are tough. You know, I've worked hard all my life. I have excellent credit, but I worked for that. I spent responsibly, I lived within my means. I had to say no sometimes when I didn't want to say no, but I did it because that's what a man does, that's what a person with character does. They stand up and they do what they knows right. I'm asking you to do that. We had faith in you. We put you in here to do that for us. How can you share up that responsibility and look us in the eyes when you pass us on the street the next time? You know, times are tough all over this country. The handouts are going to stop from the federal government. It has to. We cannot maintain this level, you've got to know that. What are you going to do next year when you don't have, when you have this big deficit that shows up? You're going to be surprised and come back to us again. All we ask is that you do what we elected you to do. Stand up, make some tough calls. I cannot believe, I don't think any of you could convince me that you could spend a few days with this budget that you have and not come up with a lot of waste, not come up with some mismanagement where that you could correct things. My God, you can see all kinds of things, and I know that you're looking at the overall, you're not looking at each individual department, but that's what your department heads are for. Put the monkey on their back, get them to do what you hired them to do. We're just asking you to do what we put you in office to do. If you're not going to address the problem now, if you're going to continue to address what will make it feel good at the time, if you're going to just treat a symptom, what's going to happen when you wake up and everything comes down around our ears? I thank you for the time you've given me here. I sincerely hope that you will do some soul searching, and that you'll make cuts, and that you'll spend responsibly. That's what we ask out of you. That's what we expect. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and we'll recognize Peter Wernicki on item 68. Item 68, Mr. Wernicki. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Pete Wernicki. How do you follow that? Great, great oratory. I wanted to talk a little bit about 68. I've read the first draft, and I want to congratulate you on really writing it very crystal clear. But I do have one point, and it's minor, but I think it kind of leads into what the previous gentleman was saying, and that is you will have three public appointees to that committee, and nowhere in there does it say who they are, give their oath to. You're not city employees, you're basically public at large doing a job for the city. I would like to propose to you that you seriously consider that the three city, or yeah, city, private citizens be fully background vetted prior to sitting on that committee. They could be inadvertently exposed to some very sensitive information, and I think you definitely need to have a little bit more of a check and balance system in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wernicki. And we'll go to Karen Kierstedt on item 74.
I'm Karen Kierstedt. I'm the owner of Mountain State Security here in Rapid City, South Dakota, and I was on the ad hoc committee for the changes of the ordinances with...
Karen, could you pull the microphone a little closer?
With the security, the language and the security ordinance that we have presently. And one of the things that we had discussed was identification of badges, the names going on, the badges, patches, et cetera. That was a tied vote, and my opinion on this is with the badges, putting the names of the security companies on the badges is overkill. If we're going to do it on the patches, I believe that should be sufficient. The other law enforcement officers that sat on that committee also agreed with me on that. So as you look at this, I believe it's going to be an adverse... as you look at this, I believe it's going to be an adverse expense to the other security companies as well as my own, and I don't feel that it's necessary to put those names on the badges identifying the security companies. The vehicles are marked. They should, that should be sufficient. So, that's just, that's my opinion for this particular item, and do you have any questions? Thank you.
And we'll recognize Robert Ewing on item seventy-four. Mr. Ewing?
Robert Ewing, thirty-nine sixteen Brookside Drive. At the August fifteenth meeting, we met, I came to the meeting and you looked at our, the changes in the ordinance that we proposed and asked us to do a public hearing. And with that, on September twelfth, we had a public hearing here in the community room. With that, we had no members of the public at the meeting. We did have one request via email from Dennis Loveland at Black Hills Corporation for some changes in definitions. You all have got my memo that we sent out on this, and asking about their clerical staff that actually buzzes people in at some of the doors at their different buildings. The committee looked at that and discussed it, and with help with one of the city attorneys with it for advice to us, also decided that that wasn't covered under a security activity. It's more clerical activity, letting people into a area that's already pretty much controlled by a corporation. The only thing that we had is, like, what Karen had spoke to with the ordinance was we did have a tie vote on the one section in there, which Karen spoke to, and I think Ken's here also to speak to that, but I'd just like to propose, any questions you had for the committee, we're always available for that. The ordinance, we've worked on for, well, now six months, and I think it's, covers everything. We did remove a couple of things in there that we've had questions on, trying not to duplicate what the state law is with it. As I told you at the last meeting I was here, that we went over several different states and communities of our size. In South Dakota right now, the only communities that have this type of an ordinance is Rapid City and Sioux Falls. So, we've tried to stay within the bounds of what's easily being taken care of in this with being able to administer it and not have it overwhelm any department in the city. That's all I have.
We do not have any additional speaker request forms for items fifty-six through seventy-seven. Is there anyone that wanted to speak on items fifty-six through seventy-seven that did not have an opportunity to do so? Karen, if you could identify yourself for the record?
Mr. Mayor, Ken O'Rourke. I did put in a request form. I don't know if it didn't reach your desk or not. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Ken O'Rourke. I'm a private practice attorney here in Rapid City. I own a private security company also and was, again, a member of the ad hoc committee to review the security guard licensing and ordinances within Rapid City. I'd like first to tell you that this committee worked hard for the city. We worked hard for each of you. We spent a lot of time and dedicated ourselves to reviewing, not only, as Bob pointed out, the existing ordinances within Rapid City, but adjacent states, adjacent jurisdictions, and other licensing throughout the country on this. We looked at this, and most of us, through the eyes of what's best for public safety and what's best for creating an atmosphere within the contracting community that contracts for these type of security services to service our community. What makes it safe? We looked at things such as the insurance requirements, and why aren't we requiring insurance for private security contractors when we do for building contractors? And working with the former city attorney, we drafted language taken from other ordinances already in existence and incorporated that into it. As has been pointed out, we did tie three to three on one, and not to correct Karen, but there were two law enforcement officers, myself being a deputy sheriff in adjoining county, and Justin Taylor that did vote, who's a reserve deputy, did vote for having the name of these companies on the badge. And there's a simple reason. When the public's dealing with an individual, we need to know who that contractor is that they're dealing with. So, if there's something that's done inappropriate, if there's a complaint, or even if there's a good thing or an attaboy, that that is looked at properly, and if it's something that needs correction or something needs to be looked at, we know who we're talking about. The police department, the finance officers, the license administrator, or the city council can take appropriate action. So, there are benefits to that. There's not all times that we're going to require, and the ordinances do not require security officers to be in uniforms at all times. So, some type of identification, if they're displaying a badge that says which licensee, which contractor they're employed by, is just another measure of public safety that allows for some type of accountability to the individuals. I thought it was very good discussions. I thought that we had great input from the city staff, the city attorney's office, from the police department, and those other members. And so, I'd ask you to take into consideration going the direction that three of the member, of the six members did, which is requiring that the licensee's name put on, be put on the badge. We did present, and I think Ms. Kierstet has a point on costs. And there are costs. There's cost overhead in any business, but you can get customized badges for as little as nineteen ninety-five that we were able to show, and that's not such a significant cost that it overrides the public safety measure that it would allow. So, thank you for the opportunity to review these task forces and participate, and we'd ask, on behalf of the three members that did ask for the badges, to display the name, your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on items fifty-six through seventy-seven? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the public comment? Motion by Roberts and a second by Peterson to close the public comment on items fifty-six through seventy-seven. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're now on ordinances. Alderman Doyle, item fifty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number fifty-six is the second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven forty-one, an ordinance modifying the procedure for certain amendments to the city's comprehensive plan by amending section two point six zero point one six zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven.
Second reading, ordinance number fifty-seven forty-two, an ordinance defining a side-load garage by adding section seventeen point zero four point six three one to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-eight.
Second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven forty-three, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the low-density residential District One by amending section seventeen point ten point zero five zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle and a second by Sasso. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-nine.
Second reading, ordinance number fifty-seven forty-four, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the Park Forest District by amending section seventeen point zero eight point zero four zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code. I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item sixty.
Second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven forty-five, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the medium-density residential district by amending section seventeen point twelve point zero five zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval as amended.
Motion by Doyle, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Sixty-one.
Second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven forty-six, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the high-density residential district by amending section seventeen point fourteen point zero four zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Sixty-two.
Second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven forty-seven, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the general agricultural district by amending section seventeen point thirty-four point zero four zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Closed, motion carries. Sixty-three.
Second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven forty-eight, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain street classifications in the mobile home residential district by amending section seventeen point thirty-eight point zero four zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-four.
Second reading of ordinance number fifty-seven forty-nine, an ordinance reducing front yard setbacks on certain, certain street classifications in the low-density residential District Two by amending section seventeen point forty-four point zero five zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-five.
First reading of ordinance number fifty-seven fifty-two, an ordinance to allow winery as a conditional use in the central business district by amending section seventeen point sixteen point zero three zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Davis. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-six, this is regarding the twenty-twelve fiscal year appropriation ordinance, and I will now be turning the gavel over to Dave Davis, and I have a short presentation, so if you want to read this into the record while I get set up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six is the second reading of ordinance fifty-seven thirty-nine FY twenty-twelve appropriation ordinance. We may have to dance up here, surely. We will take a five-minute recess. It is now five after. At ten after eight, we will reconvene. It is now ten after eight, and we'll reconvene. And the first order of business on item sixty-six is, we will turn the floor over to Mayor Koike. Mayor?
And I appreciate your help and encouragement in addressing this issue. So this page is the interdepartmental charges received by the general fund. And this is where it's coming from. And we'll talk about payment in lieu of property taxes. On top of the $5.1 million in interdepartmental charges, we have nearly half a million dollars for 2012 tied up in P I L T charges, or payment in lieu of taxes. Philosophically, I have an issue with interdepartmental charges and P I L T charges. I think that, you know, the idea of, of property taxes is to charge, is to pay for a service, but when you're doing interdepartmental charges also, I think that calls into question a P I L T charge, and so we're in the process of addressing that. And although we are not making changes to the interdepartmental charges for 2012 simply because of the complex nature of it and the timeframes involved, we are making changes if tonight's budget is approved with the amendment to address the P I L T charge. These are the amendments to the 2012 budget that were passed unanimously by the council a couple of weeks ago. Includes a modest sales tax revenue growth of 1%. Includes a property tax CPI of 2%, which is 2.1% of the 18% of your property tax bill. And that CPI has been identified as being spent on two things: the police department shortage and on our streets. A third of the P I L T charge will go back to the enterprise funds. And if you saw my previous slide, that means that, for example, the civic center will get $51,454 back. Water will get $84,000 back. That'll be a total of $227,000 that will go back to the enterprise funds. So our estimate is that we'd be going into next year's budget about half a million dollars into our undesignated cash, which, as you can see from the calculations I showed you earlier tonight, that likely means if nothing changes, we would be spending into our reserves. But we're working hard to make sure things do change. And this is some information regarding the city property tax calculation. The 2.1% CPI for 2012 is 2.1% of the 18% of the total of the average citizen's tax bill. There is another CPI available from 2010. I do not support taking it, preferably not at all, but certainly not this year. And is taking the 2.1% CPI for 2012 a good thing? No, it's terrible. We should all be offended at having to take the CPI, and we should be more offended as City Hall has been spending into the reserves, and we should be the most offended at having this kept from us and from the community. But enough with being offended. We're going to go on the offensive, tackle this problem as leaders, and work together to address these issues. When the situation regarding our budget came to my attention in July, one of the first things I thought of was our capital purchases. Look at that drop between 2010 and 2011. It changed my mind and will probably convince you as well that there really isn't much room for more cuts in capital purchases. 2007, we had a capital outlay of 2.9 million. 2011, we had a capital outlay of 1.2. We need new police cars. We need new fire trucks. We need new equipment. We need new street sweepers. And they have, there just isn't more room to cut. Although, with that being said, we are looking at every purchase as it comes along to see what kind of delays can be tolerated by the departments. Here are the city's subsidy investments. To bring forward cuts now that would have resulted in meaningful savings would have been a difficult sell because of the timing. I talked to council leadership and many council members already on this in July, and the consensus was that there just simply wasn't time to try to bring forward meaningful cuts, which would have been large, and with everything else going on, the timing of that would have been very difficult. But there will be cuts for the 2013 budget if our economic situation doesn't improve quickly. There has to be. And there's a summary of the, of the two halves of the $200,000 subsidy budget, and it's a subsidy committee that determines the health and welfare subsidies. On that committee sits council leadership and Renee Parker from United Way and myself. And then the Allied Arts Fund Drive, they disperse the other $100,000. That information is linked to your agenda, so you can see how that dispersment is handled. Here are some of the other subsidies, including detox, Black Hills Council, local governments, and the Humane Society. Not a lot of change for next year. Now let's talk about our federal funding. When Senator Johnson, Tim Johnson, was here last month, he and I visited, and he encouraged me to be prepared for cuts. He didn't know how steep, but at that time, the Senate was considering a, a package that would have cut CDBG funding and other federal funding by approximately 13%. The House's version, I believe, was in 62 or 63%. At this point, it does appear that Congress will move on with a continuing resolution, which means that our funding will probably stay intact, but we should not assume. $8.2 million of our, now this is from 2010, because we don't have the full calculations for the following two years, but this is fairly accurate. $8.2 million, and this is out of the overall budget of 100 and, you know, six, I guess it'd be 148 million for 2010. $8.2 million is federal funds. So if we lost all of that, or even a portion of that, it would have a significant impact that we would have to prepare for. And as you can see earlier, we do not have the resources to pick up those kind of losses out of our reserves. Cost-saving measures. These are some of the things that we've already done that are in the process of being implemented. One is to adjust the FTE count, remove vacant positions. We've already removed 3.5 positions, and so our FTE count has dropped for the first time in many, many years. We're also not filling certain positions, and we're delaying other positions as long as we can, and that's a collaborative effort between the department heads and myself and council leadership. And we're also eliminating, reducing the use of paper, which sounds minor, but it is significant when you consider an organization as large as ours. I want to thank Mike Multivern for, this is just, this fourth bullet point is just one example of the ideas that our department heads are bringing forward. They're stepping up to the plate, bringing forward additional ideas. And Mike, Mike brought forward the idea of saving wear and tear on our million-dollar hook and ladder, which gets five gallons to the, or five, five gallons to the mile, close enough, five miles to the gallon, and, and instead using a $35,000 Suburban for those calls where we do not need a hook and ladder, because we do need a secondary on our calls. And instead of using a hook and ladder as a secondary on calls where a hook and ladder isn't needed, we would use a Suburban, and that would pay for itself within a couple of years. We're also reducing special standalone council meetings. It's, it may seem minor, but there is a cost to convening a special council meeting. For example, normally in a special election, we'd have a meeting the next day with the swearing-in, but instead, we decided to have the swearing-in for Alderman Laurenti tonight since there wasn't any action last week. This next bullet point is huge. It's the RFP review, and it is huge. There, there isn't a font big enough to describe how big that review process is. Two examples are the employee assistance program. We're going to save tax dollars by going out for RFP, selecting a program that's more robust and provides a better service to our employees. Jeff Barberier and I did the numbers on the 394-9300 number, determined that we were spending approximately $3.63 a minute on services, and that is roughly two and a half to three times the going rate for call center services. And so there's, we're going to go out for RFP per tonight's motion to see if we can get a better deal. If we can't get a better deal, we'll find out a way to handle those calls in-house. Another thing that we're doing is citywide versus individual department contracts. There's been a few contracts that have crossed my desk recently that I've asked to review, and one of those would be for HVAC controls. We have individual contracts for HVAC controls in various departments, and we're looking at consolidating that. Here are some of the cost-saving measures in progress. Revision of alcohol licenses approval process. This will help free up agendas, streamline the process for businesses, and reduce unnecessary costs. And basically what this means, we're going to be proposing that the alcohol licenses be on one city or council agenda instead of two. Instead of setting a special public hearing, we can use the normal public hearing process that our notification processes already provide. We also are reviewing the per diem process, and, and we have an amendment that's going to be coming forward next week that essentially states that if you did not receive, or if you did not spend money on breakfast, lunch, or dinner when you're traveling, you will not receive a reimbursement. And seems like a, a minor expense, but it does add up. Delays in hiring, I already discussed this. Review vision 2012 to ensure operation and maintenance costs are addressed. I, I suggest that at some point soon, we, we convene a 2012 meeting. We could do it prior to a regular council meeting and, and have the groups present where they're at and firmly identify the O and M costs so that we're not caught off guard. Consultant selection process review. This process has already been under review, and I want to thank Alderman Nordstrom and Alderwoman Doyle and Jerry Wright, Alderman Wright, for working on this with Dale Tech. And we're going to be reviewing, there's going to be further review on two key components of the consultant selection process. One, is it, is it necessary to farm it out? Number two, is the work being distributed fairly, and are we getting the best deal? Regarding the city's subsidy investments, payment frequency is something that we're looking at, and we're proposing a change. As you can see, we have organizations receiving their, their money at different, different times throughout the year. I can provide this to you later for, for further, for further review. We invest approximately $1.2 million annually on payments to other organizations. We do not have a uniform process for these payments, which creates cash flow and work issues. Here's what the proposal is that our finance officer and I have, and that is less than $5,000 on an annual basis. That would be paid in June. Five to 25,000 on an annual basis would be paid quarterly, and 25,000 or greater annually would be paid monthly. This will be brought forward at the, at the September 28 legal and finance meeting for review and action. Although it probably doesn't require council action, I believe it's an important policy change and will affect these organizations, and it should have your approval and public notice before we proceed. Again, it's better than a cut, but it will affect these organizations. One of the things that we'll have to sort out with this, by the way, is that, is that Allied Arts receives $100,000, which is broken up into small, small chunks for various organizations, and so we'll have to figure out how that would be, how that would be, how that would be changed, because right now, they receive that, I believe they receive the entire amount, Pauline, in February. Okay. Reasons to stay positive. Grant reimbursements are pending, and sales tax revenue is up. And this is just a handful of examples of, of resources that are coming back in to, to city coffers that are, are cause to, to, to stay positive. Keep in mind that year-end activities usually are reimbursed in the following quarter, so cash isn't in the bank until later, but there's roughly half a million dollars represented here, and probably more, that will be coming back to the city. One of my favorite Far Side cartoons, two pilots flying along, and one says to the other, "Say what's a mountain goat doing way up here in a cloud bank?" And there is a mountain underneath that goat, and we need to pull up right now, and that's what we're doing. And going forward, how do we make sure our response is accurate and that we are headed in the right direction? Compass. It's not the cure-all for all of our problems, but we do have a lot banking on it. I want to take a moment to thank Charity Doyle and Jordan Mason for their idea. I want to further thank Alderman Davis for his leadership in helping move this forward. And I believe we need to move forward on this as quickly as possible. Dave and I are looking for an out-of-the-way place for the auditor, for auditors to be located, and they will probably not be located down here at, at City Hall, and they're going to have a lot of ability to hold City Hall accountable and help move things forward. One suggestion that I have that I'd like you to consider is regarding the compass program, perhaps as soon as second reading has been completed, we could consider going out for an RFP, and we could start structuring that now and go out for an RFP and hire a, a contract auditor so that we can get the program off the ground yet this fall and not have to wait until spring, because by the time we finish second reading, by the time it goes into effect, by the time the committee is appointed, and the job description is completed, and the position is posted, and the position is filled after background checks, it'll probably be towards the end of first quarter by the time this person, or persons have a, a functional plan that they can operate with and move forward to help us find the resources we need to assist us with the 2013 budget. But that's something we can talk about more later. 2013, performance-based budgeting. It's also known as outcome-based budgeting or goal-based budgeting. Instead of the old line item budgeting that we use now, this allows us to focus on the goals and missions of each department. This aims to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of public budgeting by linking the funding to the results that they deliver. The rest of the information speaks for itself. One of my favorite figures in the Black Hills is Potato Creek Johnny. There is, there is gold in the budget to be found, but unlike what he found, this gold in our budget is not typically placer gold that requires processing. Ron Weifenbach is the council's Potato Creek Johnny. Earlier this year, he found a gold nugget worth $60,000 in cellphone usage. There is more to be found, mostly again, I believe that it's processing. One of my heroes in life is Derek Vander Schaaf from whole Iowa, my home area, and he was one of the guys in the inspector general's office in the Pentagon back in the 80s that helped discover that the Pentagon was spending $900 on hammers and $600 on toilet seats. And I don't believe that there's that kind of waste going on at City Hall, but I believe that there is some, and we're going to find it. We need to find it quick. Summary. First point is transparency. We didn't know, and now we do. And as leaders, we stand together, move forward, and address these issues together. We're already working on identifying structural savings. We're going to be implementing compass, and we're already in the process of writing our 2013 performance-based budget. I'm asking you to vote for this budget tonight so that we can move forward, and that's hard for me to say, because I have voted against budgets that look much better than this one. But you don't have to like the 2012 budget. It's a situation we've been dealt. But we are going to get through this, and in order to get through it, we need a 2012 budget. And this is a budget, although it barely qualifies as one. One of my favorite lines is by my favorite comedian, Imo Phillips, and he once said, "As you leave tonight, please remember the last words of my grandfather: a truck." We've been hit by one, and we've been hit hard, but those aren't our last words. The future is bright. We're going to get through this, and will require us all to work together to move our community forward. Any questions? And I believe I have exceeded my three minutes.
Counsel, any questions of the mayor? I will first recognize Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mayor. I do have a quick question, and I frankly didn't really notice this before, but it did catch my attention. In one of your slides, you presented the number of employees between the general fund and non-general fund employees, and I am just curious, but if my numbers are correct, our budget proposed is about $42 million for the general fund, and for the enterprise, it's almost well over double that, at $95 million. What's curious to me is that the general fund has almost double the employees, yet half the amount budgeted. And I, I guess I'm, it just seems like a bit of a discrepancy, so I'm just trying to understand.
Thank you, Alderman Mason. Part of that reason is the total overall budget, not including, well, including the general fund, has the 2012 fund, the CIP fund, and those are capital projects that we do not have any employees that are expensed out of those funds. Another reason I look at the general fund, and I look at the number of 504, and immediately what comes to mind is the police department and the fire department. They, they account for over half of that, and so that alone will, will shoot the numbers off a little bit, but those are the main two reasons.
Thank you for the clarification. The other thing that I guess I've been thinking about, and it's something that I, I absolutely understand the sensitivity of the subject matter that we're talking about, and I guess I would even preface my statement before I make it, that I myself am not looking forward to any sort of increase in property taxes, as frankly, I'm not one that can really afford it. But the point being is it has been interesting in looking at some of the general fund numbers, that it seems that we've had almost $50 million only for the general fund for numerous number of years, and I guess I am curious about whether or not we've taken into account inflation and the loss of purchasing power, and I, I guess I would yield that to the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we budget, we look at the bottom line. You would like to think that inflation has been brought into the equation, but when you don't have the offsetting increase in revenues, you have to look at the bottom line. And I think that the department directors especially are fully aware that our purchasing power has decreased over the years, and you will see that and have heard that in some of the comments that they made throughout the budget hearings, is that the, the purchasing power has hurt some of their operations because they can't get as much for their money nowadays. So I think that is definitely something that has an effect on our budget, but unfortunately, with the revenue not going up with the inflation, there's nothing to do on the expenditure side as well.
I appreciate that, Pauline. And unfortunately, I guess I'll yield my time here quickly, but I, I do want to say that unfortunately, that, that seems to be the reality that I keep being faced with. I've, I've looked at the CPI and adjusting for annual CPI, and just going back to 2008, it looks like a loss of about $11 million in purchasing power. And it frankly just boils down to, it seems that we want to go to the movies for 10 cents in 2011, and unfortunately, that only really worked in the 1920s and 30s. And I, I'll yield the floor to the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you, Alderman Mason. We'll recognize Alderman Jerry Wright. Jerry?
Thank you, Mayor. After your discussion, and this being our second reading, and all of our discussion and concerns, I make a motion, we approve the second reading of, of the ordinance.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion by Wright and a second by Brown to approve the second reading of the ordinance as previously amended. Alderman Wright, you still have the floor.
I yield. Thank you.
Alderwoman Peterson.
Thank you. I'm going to support the budget, and the only reason I am agreeing to take a partial increase in the CPI is to invest in compass, which I hope will save us $1 million in its first year, of course. And yes, we could do the budget without, with the, the increase, but that would require us cutting a lot of programs. Some of these programs are struggling to stay together because they've already been cut over the years, and, and a lot of people depend on those programs. So anyway, I thought it would be better for this year to have the objective data that compass can provide us. The gentleman that spoke earlier, I agree with him, in your, in our, your own budget, you suck it up and you do without things. And it's just, the city's been operating on a really bare-bones budget, and it's general agreement on the dais that, that things have already been cut to the bone, except that we do want to invest in this compass to find different avenues that we can use to improve the budget. So it's just, it's a lot easier to suck it up at home and say, "I'm going to do without," because like most of us, we do that. But when here, sitting up here at the dais, and we look out and we see that all these programs that we deal with affect thousands and thousands of, of our citizens, it does become a lot harder to do it, but if we don't find the savings through compass, then we will have to go severe. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll recognize Jerry Wright. Alderwoman Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor Quaker. You mentioned that as federal funding starts to dry up, we're going to have a significant impact upon the operations of Rapid City. You know what else would be a significant impact is not ratifying this budget by October 1st. To the tune of $12 million, I think it'd be completely irresponsible of, for us to do that. I'm not saying it's perfect at all, and I see you shaking your head, and I understand I shake my head all the time, but there are other considerations. I can support this budget only if we start tearing apart and rebuilding for 2013 from the ground up, not any of this taking one and cutting and pasting and modifying the numbers a bit, which I think is really what we have gotten in the habit of doing, and I think we need to just tear it apart starting tomorrow. I do. I also think that I really like the concept of, and when Michelle Lentz from the CVB came up to do her report when we were having budget hearings, she said that previous councils looked at what they were subsidizing the CVB. It was only, it was about a quarter of a million dollars, and previous council said, "You know what? You need to help yourself. We can't do this for you anymore." I would like to put some of these subsidy recipients on notice that we need you to help yourselves because we can't do it all. I would like to see a structured plan to start decreasing those subsidies, a set amount per year over, you know, a certain span of time. I don't know, it might be different for each one, but you need to help us help you, period. And those are, those are the two terms on which I can support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll recognize Ron Sasso.
One of the things that, when we, as a council, were solicited, where, what we thought, and I think when we looked at the budget and we looked at everything, there were a couple of things that we, we felt pretty strongly about. I think all of us felt, based on where we were at, that though none of us wanted to take the CPI... felt, based on where we were at, that though none of us wanted to take the CPI, we felt that it was prudent and needed to, given what the budget looked like, and with the reserves dwindling. The other thing that I still feel we haven't addressed is cuts. And I do believe, and I do, and I do feel that we should be looking at some cuts. I believe this is a good budget, but I also believe we can do a little bit of tweaking. I'm not talking major overhaul, but I'm talking a little bit of tweaking, some cuts, where we can save a little bit more. And I, I agree with Alderwoman Doyle that really everyone, every, every subsidy needs to be on notice. One of the problems that we've had is that, you know, 2012 has been a wonderful program. It's created many wonderful things for Rapid City, and at the same time, each project has added, nearly every project has added an annual expense. That there are so many that, and that just builds and builds and builds. And that's one of the problems that we're faced with right now. I would, I would love to enter, love to see if anyone else would be interested and willing to dive forward, and let's make a couple of cuts.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of brief comments there. I'm still learning the budget, and I appreciate everybody's, excluding staff's, patience for helping me guide through this whole process. So a great heartfelt thanks to the staff for, for guiding me on this whole thing. I just wanted to address this from the angle of the mayor making this budget come forward as a compromise. I think it's an excellent compromise, and I wouldn't, would like to continue supporting that. Some of the reasons for that compromise, that I, or my rationale for supporting it, is we're, we're even right now having a difficult time promoting our employees. And I, I look towards the public works because that's the area I came from. It's turning into a great complicated problem, how we get our employees promoted. The other area is, my concern is the continuation of the potholes and the drainage and every other thing that I've been talking about in the last couple of months that need to be addressed. I think this budget will help us, keep us on some sort of a track in that, in that area. And if we are looking at cuts to the budget, and if there is people that are able to find fat within the budget, I'd like to see that put into potholes and drainages rather than just plain cutting it. Because, for example, our parks department is really been hurt very bad, besides the police and fire. So I, I can support that. The, the other area of concern that I, I would really like to take a look at is in the next budget, is that something we haven't addressed yet at all, and hopefully we can in some fashion, is what are we going to do for our employees next year? How do we get them off, off the position that they've been in for at least three years? And that's another area that I would like to see looked at. I think this is a great compromise. I'll support it, and with the idea of still looking towards 2013 to come up with some additional savings so that we can help out our employees. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you, Alderman Nordstrom. And we'll go to the junior member from Word Two, Steve Laurenti.
There we go. I'm a little close, too. I had hoped that, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the time. I didn't hope to be in this position on my first night, and I must say that it goes against every fiber of my being, and it would be very hard for me to support any tax increase on the taxpayers, because I have probably most recently had the closest experience with the taxpayers, because I have just walked most of Ward Two in the last four weeks. And I can tell you that this is extremely unpopular, and I'm sure that it's very unpopular for all of the citizens of Rapid City. And I support the mayor going forward absolutely. The efforts that we are going to take is going to be heavy lifting for all of us, but I know that the citizens expect us to do that, and they would have expected us to do that before tonight. And I know that the timeline was very short, and we've had some people that are on the council today that were on the previous council with this budget, but I will support the mayor going forward, but I cannot support the CPI increase. Thank you for your time.
And we'll go to Alderman Roberts.
I have to say that I very much liked what Charity said. I think it's very important that we start weaning some of these subsidies down. One thing that I found kind of interesting over the last few years' budgets is, while our fire department, our police department were being cut, our subsidies were staying pretty much the same. Now, how fair is that? I hate this CPI. It just leaves a sick stomach, or sick feeling in my stomach. But when you're put in the position that we're put in tonight, you don't have a lot of choice. And I hope you don't think that I'm, I'm just kind of taking the easy road here. I'm not. I've been thinking about this now for a month, and it's made me sick, and it's made me not sleep. But what do we do? You know, we need to have more money. We need to find it. You know, we're at a point right now where we can't cut, 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 cut on the budget, or we're going to lose that $12.8 million. And then what's that do to you? You lose your services. You don't have snow removal. You don't have, you know, things that are important to everybody, you know? I think we need to take a good, long look at next year's budget, and we need to figure out what we need to do to get back on track the right way, the responsible way. I hate this CPI, and I hate the fact that I'm supporting it, but we need to get this Compass program going. This is going to be a very, very important thing for Rapid City, and I'm very sorry that it's going to cost a few dollars a month in your taxes. I am sorry about that. It's going to cost me that, too. But I'm sucking it up and paying it, and I hate that. And I hate the fact that I feel like I lied to you people when I said that I wouldn't increase taxes. I don't want to do it, but it needs to be done. I hate it, but I'm going to vote for it, and I'm sorry about that.
We'll go to Alderman Gary Brown. Gary?
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing that I think we all consistently hear about is the subsidies, and I think Alderwoman Doyle put it very well. But what I'd like to encourage council leadership is let's get started, if we're going to be doing some cuts on subsidies or looking hard at them, let's get started now. They have a budget of their own that they've got to work with. They've got a plan. The one thing we've heard from several of the organizations we have subsidies that we're giving to, is that they're building foundations. So far, so many of them have just said, "We're building foundations." I have not, we have not seen any of them really come in and say, "We've gained any." Not working hard enough to get that done. I think we need to put some pressure on. Let's get started. If we're going to look at subsidies, let's do it now. Also, I'm going to serve council, and FYI, one of the problems, in my opinion, we still have, gentleman said, "You've been elected and been here." I've been here one year. One year. We got another five that just came on. I think part of our problem is, we don't, these elections, we're turning people over, turning people over. And I'm going to be bringing back my extend the length of terms, because we need a period of time to work together to understand this budget. It isn't like your household budget. So now, once we get through the budget, I'm going to bring that issue back up before legal finance and see if we can't move on. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a lot of really good and insightful thoughts tonight, and, you know, I think it's fair to say that everyone here has thought about this a lot, put a lot of time into this. You know, I've thought about this from numerous different viewpoints, and I agree, there's a lot of things that do need to be adjusted. I mean, looking at this from a business standpoint, I think it's fair to say that over the past 20, maybe even 30 years, there's a fair argument that city governments, not just in Rapid City, have gotten involved in things that are not traditional government functions. And we've gotten used to it. And we now consider that a part of the government. And the fact of the matter is, from a business standpoint, we're getting into operations that are not our primary objective, and we frankly can't afford it. And that's not just at the city, that's at the state and at the national government. And unfortunately, also looking at this from a business standpoint, we also have an unstable revenue stream. And what I mean by that is that the state of South Dakota, along with most of the states in the western part of the country, receive more federal dollars through grants and subsidies than we actually give to Washington. For every dollar we give, we get about three to four back. Unfortunately, a lot of those subsidies and grants from the federal government are drying up, and we all know it. So we can't count on that. So our future projections aren't looking good. In addition, the value of our currency isn't looking very good. Unfortunately, I sound like a downer here, but this is reality. These are the facts. In addition, we've seen pretty dramatic increases in inflation, which unfortunately, prior administrations didn't account for. I don't like this any better than anybody else. As a matter of fact, it personally affects me financially, pretty bad. But this is the right thing to do. It really comes down to, do we want to have what we have right now, or do we want to start talking about whether or not we want to start talking about outsourcing major departments in the next five years? I mean, these are the real, hard-line questions. And I realize that sounds a little dramatic, but let's not forget there are cities in other parts of America that have outsourced their entire police departments, fire departments, and other major functions of their city government. Unfortunately, the recession has caught up with us, and we're facing the facts. Thank you.
Alderman Sasso.
Thank you, Mayor. I work for a nonprofit. This past year, the program that I worked for lost 20% of our funding. We've still survived. The larger agency took between a 5% and 10% cut across the board. It hurt. But management, you know, and, and maybe because I come from a nonprofit mindset, it's a little different. I'm looking at the budget here, and I know we're talking, "Well, next year, we can make some cuts. Next year, we can make some cuts to the subsidies." My, my feeling is, and I, and I'll, I'll throw out a few suggestions for what it's worth. Four cuts totaling $102,76.02. 15% for the Journey Museum, that's $48,750. The Doll Building, yep, 5.5%. $11,526.02. Allied Arts Fund Drive, which basically is grants going at, getting divided up, 25% for $25,000. And Destination Rapid City, 15%, $15,000. Total, $102,7602. I probably have a bull's eye on my head, and I know Steve Laurenti was saying he may not have slept well the past month thinking about this, or a lot of us probably haven't. I say this as, this evening, three of my children were auditioning for a play at the Journey Museum, and my wife is an artist. I'd much rather see small cuts this year than one year from now, or two years from now, we look and suddenly, you know, federal funds aren't coming, and then we have to tell our, those subsidies, "They're gone. They're 30%, 50% cuts, or they're gone." I'd much rather do it this way, have some pain now, and next year, you know, things turn around, maybe those subsidies can go back up.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to speak in response to Mayor's, or to Mayor, excuse me, Alderman Sasso's comments, if I may. It's getting late. I've been up since four. Here's a perspective on subsidies. It's kind of like fostering children, or adopting children, or having children. All of a sudden, these entities are your responsibility, and you have options. You can take care of them. You can teach them how to fish. You can slowly wean them. I think that we, because we have fostered these programs, we also have a responsibility to at least put them on notice. And, and they've had no heads up that, that these are coming. I mean, I like your idea, but again, I think, I think it would be, I'm at a loss for words right now. Maybe it wasn't this administration that created it, but it's been created. We're carrying the torch. We need to do it, and we need to do it responsibly. I hope that sums up my...
Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in response to Alderman Sasso's comments, since I'm on, as a liaison to the museum, Journey Museum Board, I joined up with the Journey Museum, and partly to do what Alderman Sasso is suggesting. However, I want to have the opportunity or the time to generate some other additional ideas before we go along with, start reducing the subsidies. I think this concept is just a little premature, if I may add on to Alderman Doyle's comments. So my position is that it's just premature to do these cuts tonight. Because primarily, what I would like to do is have an opportunity, specifically in the Journey Museum area, is to give them an opportunity to come up with ideas, generate some other alternatives rather than, than taking the hit tonight. So that's what I'm asking for, is specifically on the Journey Museum, is, is give us a couple of months on this, and so we can get a chance to take this idea forward as a reduction in the future, and then also putting the journey on notice that this is something that's probably coming. Don't want to do it. Don't want to do it. But I think right now, it's just premature to do these cuts. Thank you.
Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll try and keep my comments really brief, as I have spoken a few times now. But I would like to speak in response to a few of the comments. The idea of cuts being premature, I guess I don't quite agree with that, and I just want to state why. We have organizations that don't even have contracts with the city. They have, the city has zero obligation legally whatsoever to give these people money, flat out. There are organizations that we are currently subsidizing for hundreds of thousands of dollars, that have no contract. And that contract has expired for well and good. I've brought this up before. I realize it's a politically sensitive subject, but the fact of the matter is, I think it's a bad precedent. If the city keeps, wants to keep doing this, I don't really understand what prevents the city from letting Joe Blow come off the street and ask for half a million dollars and let the city give it, because there is no legal boundaries on this one. So I do think there are some organizations we do need to look at, and I won't name that organization tonight. I also want to go on to say, on the opposite side, I have had to ask the questions of whether or not the cuts would be enough. As from the mayor's presentation, we saw that it's about a million dollars, give or take, with quite a few of the organizations. It's about what it comes to. We've lost about $11 million from 2008 to 2011 in purchasing power, if you take the annual CPI and you adjust it. $1 million is not going to make up the $11 million difference. It's not going to do it. I hate to say this, but if we're going to do cuts, we need to have some serious discussion of how you make up about $11 million, if you want the same kind of service with the same sort of efficiency in this city. And I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This year's budget has been extremely interesting from many, many angles. From the beginning of it, that it was presented by the previous mayor, and that the timeframe created one that the current mayor grudgingly accepted it, and I will say that on his behalf, grudgingly. But there have been some things that have been so positive about it that I don't want the public to go unnoticed. Last year, I remember going through budget hearings that went on forever and ever and ever. We nitpicked, we politicized, we campaigned. We had, if I remember right, after budget hearings, 50-some items that we carried on to further budgets, and when we got to them to deal with them in later meetings, no one could remember who brought them up, much less why they were there, or of what relevance. There were questions, there were statements made, what a waste of the citizens' time having these special meetings, having all of these officials, both elected and paid, being here. With that history being said, I'm going to compliment this current council. We approached this budget differently, at least I feel it was differently. I felt that the result, although not one that any single one of us is 100% happy with, we approached it from a standpoint that, we sent out a survey, and we simply asked a couple of basic questions. What would it take for you, as a councilperson, to ratify this budget? You see, the relevance of that question, and it was alluded a little earlier, was that if we do not ratify this budget by the first of the month, if we do not present something to the county that says we need a tax levy of such, they won't levy any taxes. It's that simple. That's somewhere on the north side of $12 million. Now, if one thinks that we're dealing with an edgy budget today, take $12 million off that revenue screen, and imagine the kinds of cuts that are going to be made. We're no longer talking about slicing the fat from around the stake, or possibly finding a little bit of marble to cut out of the middle. We've filleted this thing. There's not even that we've nicked the bone, we've taken the bone out. So we have an obligation to you, the citizens, to ratify a balanced budget by October the 1st. This council approached that responsibility, and I will use that word very proudly, the responsibility to ratify a balanced budget. They approached it with, what is it going to take to ratify? What's it going to take for you to agree? And quite frankly, they brought back a very professional, very mature approach. Rather than politicizing as it was done last year, rather than all the little nitpicky things, they literally came forward with a couple of very common threads on every survey. And the common threads were as logical as you can imagine. Our spending power has gone down, and for us to maintain the same, we need more revenue to buy the same as we bought last year. Or you need to make enough cuts to offset that. Now, I personally struggle with the word "cut," because I don't find anything rational about a cut. That, to me, is simply going in and slashing, and you end up with whatever the result is. And I don't think that's a very mature approach to what we have to deal with. On the other hand, I think there's, there are certainly savings to be gained, and I'm not sure that savings is absolutely the correct word, but it, to me, is more surgical than There are surgical savings to be made, and Compass, part of its function, is to help find those pockets of marble in that stake so that we can decide if those are the things that need to be cut out of the budget. Is that something that we want to take, that savings, or not? Or is there a more functional way to do things that will reduce our overhead? Cutting the budget isn't always the way to save money. Sometimes there's a more efficient way to do it. Let's keep in mind that the whole concept of the Compass is not a gotcha program, but rather, not a matter of finding something wrong, it's a matter of finding the correct way to do it, the finding something more right, and that the savings come from doing it in a more correct fashion. Another point, just briefly, and I have to pick on my sidekick here a little bit, but if Sam and I were going to have a contest tomorrow on who could lose the most weight over the next six months, he would lose. I can guarantee you, I can lose almost as much as he weighs. So when we start looking over the course of, let's slash and burn, it's a lot easier for me to lose 10 pounds over the next month than it is for Sam. It was a lot easier four years ago for us to make a cut in the budget when there was fat than it is when we've been in four years of a zero-growth budget, and the dollar isn't buying what it used to. You saw in the mayor's presentation what's happening in our equipment purchases. They're almost nonexistent by comparison. Folks, at some point, we're talking about serious services of infrastructure, of police and fire, not being funded correctly, because we've cut in, not surgically, but we've made cuts. So I have a real problem when we start talking about across-the-board cuts. I have a real problem when we talk about, let's make a cut so that we can sound good to our constituents. We made a cut tonight. Let's make a cut. I'm sorry, I can't support a cut for the fact that we made a cut. That's not doing this budget or this city any good. Let's be honest with ourselves. We found a couple of common threads in that, and last week, when we sat down, we made an amendment to the budget that is being presented tonight, that this council agreed upon, and I have to compliment, once again, the majority of the members of this council responded to the survey. They responded with their ideas of what it would take to make it work. They responded with the kinds of surgical savings that they might make, but more importantly than the dollars or the FTEs, they responded with, what impact would this have on our city and the services that this city provides to you, the citizens? Think about that. Isn't that really what we're talking about, rather than a cut? What services are you willing to have either minimized or to do without? And that isn't something we do willy-nilly up here to satisfy our guilt that we didn't take a gut, or a cut, or that we can't vote for the CPI. That's the kind of thing that we have to study, and in my opinion, we have to study and do the right thing, and that takes some time. So I would certainly say that the mayor's direction that we ratify this budget, I wholeheartedly concur. I think that I will speak for, at least I'll speak for everyone that responded to the survey. The common thread ran through that as well, that none of us liked it. None of us liked this budget. It's not where we want it to be. We have all high hopes for 2013. We all have high hopes that we're going to see some things that are significantly different, but we've got to get this one off the ground so that we can move to that direction. And with that, I simply, after far too much time, will say, I'm going to be supporting the motion to pass the second reading. Thank you.
Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I call the question.
Any objections to calling the question? Are there any objections to calling the question? Okay, there is? Okay, do we have a second to the motion to call the question?
Sir.
We have a second. Mayor Nordstrom will proceed to a vote on simply calling the question, which is to end debate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Right.
An aye is to end debate and proceed with the vote on the budget, and a no is to...
Okay. Right is an aye. Laurenti.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Mason.
No.
Doyle.
Aye.
Sasso.
No.
Davis.
Aye.
Peterson.
No.
Roberts.
No.
Brown.
Aye.
Motion passes 6 to 4.
Okay, we proceed directly to a vote on the ordinance, no further debate. An aye vote is to pass the budget, and a no is to vote against it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Laurenti.
No.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Mason.
Aye.
Doyle.
Aye.
Sasso.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Roberts.
No.
Brown.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Motion carries 8 to 2.
Thank you, everyone. Item 67. Alderman Doyle.
Well, that's fun to follow. All right, second reading, ordinance number 5740, an ordinance changing the name of the development, the Department, excuse me, of Growth Management to Department of Community Planning and Development Services by amending Chapter 2.47 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Peterson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 68.
First reading of ordinance number 5751, an ordinance establishing Compass Internal Audit Program by adding Chapter 2.95 to the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
Second. Motion by Doyle, second by Mason. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 69.
First reading of ordinance number 5754, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Res zoning the within-described property is requested by the City of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district for a parcel of land located at 7887 Sheridan Lake Road, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Brown. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 70.
First reading of ordinance number 5755, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Res zoning the within-described property is requested by Centerline Inc. for St. Patrick LLC for rezoning from low-density residential district to general commercial district for a tract of land located northwest of the intersection of Katron Boulevard and Wellington Drive, and I move approval.
Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 71.
71 is the first reading of ordinance number 5756, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Res zoning the within-described property is requested by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Ken Burgland for the estate of Patricia, ah, it is late, Patricia Burgland, excuse me, for rezoning from medium-density residential district to Park Forest District for land located along Burgland Road, south of the intersection of Burgland Road and Fox Road. And I recommend approval.
Motion by Doyle and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 72.
First reading, ordinance number 5757, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Res zoning the within-described property is requested by Richard Huffman for rezoning from general commercial district to light industrial district for land located at the northeast corner of the intersection of Dias Avenue and Eglin Street, and I recommend or move approval.
Motion by Doyle and second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 73.
Would that be Mr. Brown, or would that still be me?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Request by Dream Design International Inc. for preliminary plat for proposed lots 11 through 20 of Block 22 of Big Sky Subdivision, located on the east side of DeGeece Drive between Homestead Street and Bernice Street. Move approval with stipulations.
Motion by Doyle, second by Brown, for approval. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 74.
Item 74 is the ad hoc security guard review task force recommendations, and I yield the floor.
Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Guess I'd first like to ask some questions, if possible. I am curious, after reviewing this ordinance yet again and getting a better grasp of it, Mr. Ewing, earlier in the night, if I may direct a question to Mr. Ewing, since he spoke on the subject earlier, Mayor, I suppose I should ask for that indulgence. Thank you. Mr. Ewing, you talked about somebody having a concern about the definitions, and that was something that I also have in my notes here, that I looked at the definition of security activity, and I was just a little bit concerned about the idea of somebody who is hired for watching, and that can be pretty loosely interpreted, and also is involved in the prevention or misappropriation or concealment of goods. I guess the thing that I'm thinking about is somebody at, like, Walmart that's a greeter, could she be interpreted, if wanting to check a bag, as being in violation if she does not have a security license, of conducting security activity, as per that definition?
I'm sorry. What we looked at with that is, they are not performing security duties, as they do have full-time security at Walmart, as, just an example. Same with JCPenney's and Sears and the different ones. They're just doing a service to check people as they're going out, but they do have also full-time security close to each exit, at each, each one of the locations there. If not, they're on their video surveillance, and those people are licensed.
Sure. I appreciate that, and I definitely understand, especially when looking down through security guard patrol functions, security business, some of the other definitions, I definitely understand the intent. I guess my concern was, is mostly the way that's strictly written. I guess I don't see that, that, I see the intent, but I don't actually see that spelled out, and I guess that was something of a concern for me. The only other item that, with this, that I am still going to question is, the million-dollar insurance policy just seems, you know, fairly high, and I guess I'm concerned about how that affects maybe some of the smaller operators in this industry.
Well, in most cases, you know, to protect themselves, they need to carry some insurance, and to protect us, you know, the city and the people of the city. All of them do carry some form of insurance, but this will be to require them to show that they have some insurance, and that they are covered, you know, up to a million dollars. We had talked, making that $2 million at one point, and then with counsel from our legal counsel, and for looking at other cities, we decided to go with $1 million.
Can I ask for maybe a little bit more elaboration on why exactly the reasoning for $1 million? I mean, why that amount was picked?
Well, I guess it's just a number that we looked at, other organizations, or other communities, other parts of the country, and they were starting at $1 million and going up, depending on what it was. Try so we don't have someone coming into the city and just saying, okay, I'm, I'm going to start employing X number of people doing private security, but I have a license through the state with my name, saying that I'm John Social Security Company, and it, you know, there's nothing there, if there's some liability in the long run, to protect, you know, the people that work there, for one thing, and to protect the city for lawsuits, if it's something that happened where someone thought it was a law enforcement person, and it wasn't, we have something there to back up any legal ramifications that come.
Appreciate that, Mr. Ewing, and I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
someone thought it was a law enforcement person and it wasn't, we have something there to back up illegal ramifications that come.
Appreciate that, Mr. Ewing, and I'll yield the floor. Thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Jerry Wright. Alderman Wright?
Robert. Sir. The item I have before me on this reads, it's be uniforms and badges. Section two, it reads, display the licensees, company name, and all patches, and badges worn, but the and badges and worn is lined out. Is that? I'm hearing...
What we did with that is that's the one that we tied on. We marked it as lined out and badges. That was up to the council, we brought that to the council. We had a three-to-three tie vote on that, if we were going to add the name to the badges or not. Both sides had their own reasons for adding it or not adding it.
So, my understanding is that those that were in law enforcement were pretty much for it, and those that were in the private sides were against it?
Well, I really can't speak to that because...
But the badge cost is, what, fifty to a hundred bucks or less to get an inscribed badge?
I'd say, you know, as you were told before, there are some that we can get around, you know, that twenty-five dollar mark. But if you're looking for a quality badge, in my opinion, it's going to be around the fifty dollar or more.
I think that's a cheap price to pay to provide additional authentication and to protect the public, whoever, from being scanned by a quasi, not quasi, but assuming security person, similar to what we had that abduction we had up in Piedmont, it was, you know, the red light, someone pulled someone over. It's a cheap price to pay for, I think, for additional security. I would support and make the motion that that we accept the committee's recommendation with the change that and badges warrant shall be included in the requirement to have the company's name displayed, and I still should...
We have a motion by Wright and a second by Peterson. Normally, discussion doesn't proceed a motion by the motion maker, but unless there's objection, we'll go ahead and allow that motion. Any further discussion, we'll go to Alderman Nordstrom.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Wright kind of stole my thunder, so that's okay. I'm comfortable with that. So I'll be supporting that motion, but I have a question, and I don't know who gets to answer this question, Mr. Mayor, is the the permit fees, how that originated, when that was adopted, and is that a fair price? So I don't know who gets to answer that question, but essentially it'll be when that price was established, that permit fee established, and I can find a page if anybody wants to know about it, and, page three, and then when the last time that was altered, or along that line. Thank you, Mayor.
Don't have the answer for you on that right now, but Tamara, do you think we could get the answer, Alderman Nordstrom, on that?
Because as I understand the motion is, this will come back.
Oh, okay.
This needs to be put into first reading form, right? And so it will be a matter of time before this comes back, and we'll get the answer to your question in the meantime.
Thank you, Mayor.
Does that work for you?
That will work. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any further discussion? Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment, and if I can get a second, keep the floor, and that would be to interject the word "or" between patches and badges. And I'll explain where I'm going if I can get a second for discussion, please. Thank you.
We have a amendment. Now, that's a friendly amendment, which doesn't technically need a, who made the motion?
Jerry.
So you're, are you okay with the friendly amendment?
I'm prepared.
Okay, good. So would you not need a, would you not need a motion unless we have objection? So the motion's been amended. Alderman Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I struggled with this one, because I could understand Karen's comment earlier. You've got a new employee, you require a badge. It either means that that employee has to, in addition to buying their uniforms and whatever, their leather and such, we're now requiring them to buy a badge, or we're requiring the business to fund this process. There's a cost here that I could see, that I was looking at, and I was a little concerned about as well. On the other hand, the discussion tonight came up with that we've got people that are non-uniformed, and I was making the assumption, that I think most of us were, that all security guards are uniformed. And I thought the patch was sufficient at that point. On the other hand, when I find out tonight, and it makes sense that we may in fact have someone who's a loss prevention specialist at a store, and they're in fact a security guard, and we don't want them running around in a uniform for obvious reasons, but when it's time to identify who we are, there needs to be a means of identification. A blank badge isn't good enough, in my opinion. So I can see both sides, and this is where my friendly amendment of an "or." I think if a uniformed security person has a patch that says ABC Security Company on their sleeve, I would be okay with that. If they do not have a patch, then their badge needs to identify who they're with. And Bob, I've got some of those that worked on the committee, I see some heads nodding. Could I, if I could, Mr. Mayor, could I ask an opinion of the committee? Would that satisfy the needs of the committee, Bob? It would be an economical way that... Karen, would you be okay with that? Okay. It would satisfy the economical needs, and yet for those that were not uniformed, we'd be able to identify them. I will yield the floor.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. We'll recognize Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I would not support the entrance of the "r" into the the ordinance. The reason why is because at thrift stores, you can buy uniform shirts. Sometimes you can get a whole bag of them for just a dollar. So I don't think it's a safety. Obviously, you could say, well, anyone can make a badge also, but it's going to take a little bit more thought and time to do that, so I would, I will support this with the requirement that there is an actual badge. Thank you.
Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I would be interested in, it looks like there was a caucus going on amongst the group that was the Adcock Group, so I can wait for my answer. I don't need an answer right now, but essentially on the "or" amendment to this, where I'm coming from on this, and maybe Alderman Davis can help me on this, and I respect his opinion coming up with the "or" concept, but the the idea that, what I'm looking at is when a person is facing an officer, such as what we're incurring right now, is that this is an opportune time to face an officer. I get to see his badge, and whereas if there's a patch on the officers, or the security officer's side, it's difficult to see that patch. So I, right now, I'm leaning towards the idea of, unless I can be convinced otherwise, but I think there needs to be the the name on the badge for that. So anyway, some more discussion that needs to take place in between now this reading and the second reading. Thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Thank you. Alderman Wright.
In friendly support, if the amendment is to include that any patches or badges worn will include the company name, I agree.
Seeing no further discussion, the motion on the floor is for approval with the amendment. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one no from Bonnie Peterson. Public Works Item is Gary Brown, seventy-five.
Thank you, Mayor. Authorize Mayor and Finance Officer to sign an agreement between the City of Rapid City and Sea Tech Engineering Services Incorporated for professional services for Mount Rushmore Road Utilities Reconstruction. Project number SSW one-one-dash-one-nine-two-six, CIP number five-zero-eight-four-zero, in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. I move to authorize.
We have a motion by Brown and a second by Nordstrom. Any discussion? Alderman Wright.
I want to make sure that in this contract, that it's a full understanding that they will take into account the work that's been done by the Mount Rushmore Road Group to beautify and improve the environment for the motoring visiting public. I just want to make sure that's absolutely a part of that contract, and it's not ignored.
Dale Tech, can you confirm?
One of the guide documents that this consultant will be using is the corridor study that was approved, and I believe there was input from the group in the corridor study. So that study will be one of the main references for the consultant to do their work.
And are they scheduled to have regular meetings or required meetings with the corridor group, so to make sure there's good communication?
City staff will be attending the meetings with the corridor group.
What about the consultant?
The consultant will be, not every meeting necessarily, but certainly with, when important items are to be discussed, they'll be in attendance.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is for approval. All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number seventy-six. Alderman Davis, would you read this in the record for us?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seventy-six is to acknowledge a report on the polling place for Lakota Homes, and to preface effective with the June twelve, June twenty-twelve federal, state, and city elections, Ward Four, Precinct Three will begin using the new polling location at the Lakota Homes Community Center located at seven-nineteen Wombley Drive, in change from the previous location at General Beetle, and Ward Four dash four will continue to vote at Ward Beetle. I move approval.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Nordstrom to acknowledge. Pauline, did you have anything to add to this?
I just wanted to say, well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that this is a good step in the right direction, so that we can get to polling place on the the north side of the interstate also, and they don't have to travel so far to get to where they need to be. So I thank Julie Pearson in the Auditor's Office for working with us to establish that polling place.
Thank you, and I'd also like to say a few words too, but first we'll go to two councilmembers of lights. We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
I just want to say, give you a high five on this, because in that area, people have a lot of transportation issues, and also in other areas, I know that some of those voters over there have to go clear on the west side of town times to vote. I don't know if this will be affecting any of that, or... Nope, okay. Okay, that's redistricting. Anyway, it's a good high five for the people there that live in that area, so they don't, they can go in and vote us out of office. Thanks.
Alderman Roberts.
Well, I want to thank you. This was a very good idea. It's been talked about for a little while. And for the people in my ward, especially that lived up there, that had a lot of confusion about where to go and vote, because they were going quite a ways, this is going to be a very good thing. You know, when you don't have to travel that extra mile or two, it's a lot easier to find your polling place. So I just want to thank the mayor for this. This is going to be a good thing for a lot of people up there. Hopefully, our numbers in that ward will come way up, and I'm just happy to see this done finally. Thank you.
Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, John. Beat me to the punch, but yeah, I can't reemphas, I can only reemphasize how good of a thing this is, because it has been a hassle and been talked about. I think that's the understatement of the evening for a while about this, and this is definitely in the right direction. So thank you again.
Thank you, Alderman Mason. I'd just like to say thank you to all those who assisted in this, and especially to Fred Eisenbrunn, who's the manager at Lakota Homes. He's a former Rapid City police officer. He had a heart for serving native people then, and he has a heart for serving native people in his new capacity, and he helped do some heavy lifting on this. And I also want to thank our county auditor, Julie Pearson, and our Ward Four aldermen for their tremendous support on this, and of course, Pauline for her assistance. And just so that we're all on the same page, this means that instead of this precinct, four dash three, voting at General Beetle, they will be voting at seven-nineteen Wombley Drive at the Lakota Homes Community Center. This will affect Lakota Homes, the Sioux Edition, Dakota Subdivision, North Star, Tyler New, Caitlin Subdivision, Mall Ridge, and Prairie Hills. And so I want to thank everyone for their assistance in moving this forward. We do have a motion on the floor to acknowledge. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Seventy-six A. Alderman Davis.
Item seventy-six A is a request for authorization to seek proposals for engineering services for a water main upgrade to the airport with an estimated cost of five million, five hundred thousand dollars, and I yield the floor.
And we'll go to Cameron Humphries from the airport for a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Council, for giving me the opportunity to stand before you and present this. I want to tell you just right off the bat that the reason that I'm standing before you is because we do have a issue out at the airport with our water, and it has to do with flow rates, how much water we're actually getting out there, and I'll discuss that in a minute. But the next thing is, is not only do we have an issue, we have a solution to that problem, and finally, we actually have a funding source for it. So with that, I'm going to step you quickly through a brief history of where we're at. The airport is served by a single twelve-inch water main that goes out to the airport. We're at the end of the line. Twelve-inch water main going out to the airport is a fairly small water main. Water flow rates have been steadily declining due to development along Highway forty-four, and then, of course, development at the airport. Right now, we are, we have flow rates somewhere around fifteen hundred gallons per minute. What is required by international fire code and also NFPA standards is around three thousand gallons per minute, so we're about half the flow rate that we need to be. The Fire Marshal identified this issue back in two thousand and three, when they were doing some flow testing out at the airport. They brought it to the airport's attention. We've been working steadily on trying to improve the issues out there at the airport. As one example, we recently did an on-airport water upgrade that looped a water system out on our runway. And we actually went from somewhere in the neighborhood of about nine hundred gallons per minute up to that fifteen hundred gallons, so we actually improved fairly substantially, but certainly not nearly enough of what we need to do. The Fire Marshal has also made numerous concessions to aid development, to allow development to continue out there. However, there are some building restrictions that is slowing development. For example, buildings greater than thirty-six hundred square feet out at the airport currently required to be sprinkled because of the low flow rates. In addition, any new user that taps on to that water main between the airport and town, if they're going to try to tap into that water main, they have to show that they're not going to reduce flow rate. Well, how do you do that? How do you tap into a water system and then not affect the flow rate? So essentially, it's brought development in terms of being able to connect into that water system to a standstill. The council became aware of this issue. They asked the airport to conduct a study and provide recommendations. The airport entered into a contract with Kaderus Lee and Jackson, a local engineering firm, along with AE2S, and they constructed, conducted a study back in two thousand and nine. That study was then delivered to Public Works. Public Works then added the recommendations from that study into their utilities master plan. So let's talk a little bit about those studies recommended. So let's talk a little bit about those studies' recommendations. They reviewed a number of different ideas of how to solve the issue, but let's get to the salient point, and that's the most cost-effective solution. They determined that the most cost-effective solution was a second 16-inch water main to the airport that would tie into the existing 12-inch, thereby creating a loop. If you're familiar with water systems, if you have a single line going out to a location, especially as far as the airport, it creates flow issues. If you can somehow loop that system, you not only create redundancy, but you increase the flow rates. By doing the 16-inch main out to the airport, we would be going from 1,500 gallons a minute to about 3,500 gallons per minute. So we would actually be exceeding the international fire code standards, which would provide for at least 500 gallons per minute for growth, which is actually fairly substantial. This would also support additional, both on-airfield and off-airfield development. You know, one of the faster developing areas between Rapid City and the airport, or I'm sorry, in Rapid City, is between Rapid City and the airport. Like I said, it would provide some redundancy and ensures there would not be a single-point failure. Just briefly, you can see up here on the map, if you look up towards the top of the map, that dotted red line, that is what the recommendation is, is essentially taking a 16-inch water main from East Anamosa Street and then running it east out towards the airport, and then connecting to that. Now, if you see the water line that continues to the northeast, up to that yellow dot in the extreme upper right-hand corner, that's actually Phase 2. That would be another water line going out to a reservoir, so we're not considering that at the moment. What is important is just that 16-inch water main that runs from Anamosa in that stair-step fashion eastward out to the airport, looping back into the 12-inch water main. The 12-inch water main essentially follows Highway 44 out there, and you can see that in the red line underneath at the bottom of the map. So let's talk a little bit about cost, schedule, and funding. Right now, based on the KLJ's initial look at this project, we're looking at somewhere between 5.5 and $6 million. We're looking at about three to six months for doing the design work and determining right-of-way and acquisition, and then 12 months for the construction. One of the unique opportunities that we have is that, as you are well aware, Jackson Springs project came in well under budget, and the bond that was issued to help support that provides some additional funding. Talking with Pauline, it looks like there should be around $4 million left over from that bond, which will leave ample contingency money for the Jackson Springs project that we could divert, or utilize, I should say, for this project. In addition to that, there could be up to about $2 million in .16 funds, if, again, if the council chose to go down this road. So it looks like that we have good funding opportunity to actually move forward with this project. So what we're asking to do is, we're not asking to go out and build this, what we're asking to do is to authorize Public Works to seek proposals for the engineering services for the airport water main. Of course, an RFP would be put out there, and Public Works would review those, and then it would come back to council for approval. And at that point, we would have to nail down exactly the funding sources for doing the construction. But as I said, it looks like we have good opportunity with the money that's available. With that, I'll stand for questions.
We'll first go to Alderman Wright.
Thank you, Cameron. On that route, which you're talking about on the north side, I believe at one time, I don't think it's resolved, it might be, there were some water issues with some of the residential areas up there. Are we going to contact DE&amp;R to see if there's any funding through their SRF or through their grant program to assist in financing this? Or have we talked about that?
We have, we find, we've kind of formed an ad hoc committee with Public Works and Finance Office and Fire Marshal and some other folks that are interested in this, and that's certainly a possibility. I think that our sentiment was is that we'd sure like to be able to build this project without having to rely on that, however, that if we're looking at bringing other communities on, that certainly that they would pay a connection fee and then become users of the water system. Of course, that would be for the council to decide in the future, but at least that was the committee's sentiment.
Yeah. I believe at the time I was aware of this, that they were, DNR was scrambling to find a source of water for them. So they might be amiable and agreeable and help you a lot, so please check into it. Thank you.
Certainly a possibility.
Alderman Laurenti.
I just had one question. As I'm going through some of the analysis here, is there any, I don't see it, but I'm looking for like the future, how, what kind of growth? How many years are we looking at before this new water main? I absolutely support it. It's an infrastructure piece we need. Do we have any analysis as to how long this will support the airport and any additional growth, any analysis that surrounds that?
There is some fairly extensive analysis in KLJ's report about how long this will support the airport, and this does give good support well into the future. However, they do recommend a second phase, which includes the addition of that water main that goes out to a reservoir that's located up on the ridge line, and which would provide water well into the future. I apologize, I don't have off the top of my head how many years they're talking about. Perhaps Dale Tech can give us an understanding, but I know that was in the KLJ report. Thank you.
Alderman Mason.
Just out of curiosity, Cameron, so the grand total for not just this phase, but the whole system fully completed would be about $12 million. Is that correct for the over... Okay. And just out of curiosity, I guess I'm with Mr. Laurenti, because one of the things I'm curious about is I'm noticing the building and development and the gap between that on the east, or I'm sorry, the western edge, and then to the eastern edge of the airport, and I'm just wondering, is that going to fill in by doing this? And, you know...
I honestly hope so.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just wondering if this, you know, is this system going to be adequate enough? It's really the question I'm boiling down to.
From my opinion, and actually I have Rodson here from KLJ that could perhaps talk about it a little bit more extensively, but certainly, this is going to solve the immediate issue of the low flow rates. I mean, we have a problem now, and we're well below what the international fire codes. So this does get us up to where we need to be, plus some additional growth. You know, at some point in the future, development is going to be such that we're going to have to add, you know, water out there. How much that's going to be is, to me, an open question.
Sure, absolutely. Appreciate that. Yeah, absolutely. I guess I can't say that I don't support this. I'm just wondering, it looks like this is going to definitely open up for development very quickly, and I think it's a good thing. Only question is, is, you know, how fast? Thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Peterson.
Thank you. I have a few questions. We're at this 1,500 gallons. How long can we stay there?
We've been there too long. How is that as an answer? How long can we stay there?
What pressures are we having to increase it? Obviously, we're meeting some standard that they're letting us get away with it.
We are well below, and I can have Mike Maltevern from the Fire Department chime in here, but we're well below the international fire code standards, as you can see. We're half the flow rate. The way that we're accommodating that is we're required, we're requiring buildings out at the airport greater than 3,600 square feet to be sprinkled. There's going to come a time when, that if you have enough sprinkled buildings, that 1,500 gallons isn't going to be enough to be able to support even sprinkled buildings. In addition to that, we've limited development along Highway 44 and tapping into that 12-inch water main that we have going out there. I would like to defer to Captain Maltevern.
Yes, I was going to ask the mayor if I could ask Mike a question. Chief, I know you like sprinkled buildings, so I don't see that being too much of an issue. So where are we as far as the safety and how long we can go on this 1,500 gallon flow rate?
Thank you. And I will reiterate what Cameron has said. We have given multiple concessions in the last three or four years to allow what development has occurred at the airport in that short timeframe to occur. Based on, as Cameron alluded to, we have required buildings to be fire sprinkled. The issue is, when we look at protection of buildings, we'd like to see fire sprinklers as well as the ability to pull water from those water mains and have auxiliary firefighting, meaning firefighters and fire trucks. Okay, we've given concessions at the airport to say that we are anticipating that fire sprinkler will control a fire that occurs at the airport. At this time, we don't have the water to provide that auxiliary firefighting, being fire trucks and firefighters. So right now, we're putting all of our eggs in the basket that the sprinkler systems that we're mandating right now are going to protect those buildings, but we're really in a position where we can't support much further development to occur at the airport without providing additional fire flows.
Okay, thank you. I, I mean, obviously, I'm for the development and all that would go out, take it out to the airport. I just have concerns because we're struggling to meet, you know, basic needs, and so I'm trying to assess before you go out for, spend further money on this project where I am on that. The other question I have for you, Cameron, is, does your enterprise fund have any money for this?
The short answer is no. The longer answer is, is that we can contribute a small amount of what is on airport property. FAA will allow the airport to spend federal grant money on what's on airport. Infrastructure improvements, we can't extend beyond. That's the grant, the federal grant piece. As far as the enterprise fund, we don't maintain large cash balances.
Okay. And Pauline, how much excess money do you think we're going to have from this Jackson Springs? Cameron said something about there's some money being held back in contingency, but and when would Jacks, when will we know how much Jackson Springs is going to end up costing us when it's all said and done?
Cameron was right in that we currently, I believe, have about $7 million that can be allocated either to contingency for the Jackson Springs project or to this project. It was decided through Public Works, looking at the project, that they would like to retain the $3 million for contingency for the Jackson Springs project, therefore allowing $4 million to be allocated to this project. Now, when the final dollars will be decided, quite honestly, will probably be towards the end of the project. We won't know until we get further into the project, because we're very, in the infancy stages of it at this point, we won't know for quite a while yet.
Right. And when is that slated to be completed?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Tech.
Okay, thanks.
Project completion is going to be in approximately two years from now, so to know the final cost, the water treatment plant is going to be in the year 2013.
Okay. Okay, well, these are some important issues to consider, so thank you very much.
Any further discussion? We do not have a motion. We recognize Charity Doyle.
I'd like to move. We have some psychic stuff going on here. I move that we move this to Public Works to just give it ample scrutiny. We can see what's lining up so that we're not putting the cart before the horse.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion by Doyle and a second by Mason. Any further discussion on the motion? Richie Nordstrom.
To the IT guys, our button seems to go on in the fritz again. Just a couple of comments. If we need to take it to Public Works, I'll support that, but I was hoping that we could move forward on this because it's a project that's well overdue, but I'm not going to object to it that much. In back in the, back in the days when I was visiting with Robert Ellis about this project, he was also suggesting that we could probably take this forward to having the subdivisions taking a look at adding on to our system as well, and that might be able to help subsidize our costs. I don't know exactly the word I'm looking for right now, but it would, they would have some additional funding as a source to help pay for this or reimburse us as we go along. So as the growth and development continue out in that area, we might be able to reimburse ourselves from that growth. The other thing I think about, it also adds another layer of security for the airport so we don't have encroachments from other communities about this as well. There is, there is that underlying current or tone or the atmosphere that I've encountered out there from other communities about wanting to take over that airport. So I think this will help us alleviate some of that concern. The, the, I just want to point out to the council also, the worst-case scenario, if this project doesn't go forward on it, we have just the one water line going out to the airport. Not only the other, the other concerns that Cameron has brought forward to us, but what happens if we do have a fire out there and then the water line breaks at the same time? Then we have to scramble to find tankers to get up there. So I can't help but overemphasize the point that we need to get this project moving forward as quickly as possible. And then the question was also brought up about FAA grants going out in that area. Just an advice to the rest of the council is that the feds have been playing games, in my opinion, with, with the FAA and, and the issues that have been dealt with, with the, the funding sources out with the, with the FAA. And so there may be some changes, modifications coming up from that area as well, so let's be cautious about relying totally upon the FAA funding coming in as well. I'll yield the floor.
We'll go to Alderman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Nordstrom summarized it very well, and that's what I was going to say. I will not be supporting this motion. I think it's time, we need to move on and get this started and get the information we need. We can gum it to death. It's still going to be a problem. We need to get moving on this as soon as we can. It's going to help so many areas, getting good quality water out there, good flow of water, and it's going to help some things, even with Boxell or any area out there. So I will not be supporting this motion. I think it's time we take action and move on with this. Thank you.
We'll go to Alderman Sasso.
I also would like to echo Alderman Brown's comments and also...
Would you like to offer a motion before you echo?
Before I echo?
Before you speak, then you can offer a motion.
Oh, though we already have a motion?
No, we don't.
Okay, a substitute motion. Though I, I would like to make a substitute motion for approval.
Second. We have a motion by Sasso and a second by Roberts for approval of item 76A. Can you still have the floor?
I don't have much else to add, other than clearly, we have, we have a problem with water flows there now, and the sooner we can get this fixed, and as I understood, it sounded as though it was a priority, and so the sooner we move on it, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mason.
Thank you, Mayor, and appreciate the discussion that's been conducted on this. I guess I, I agree with the statement that was made. I disagree with a statement, what the intent of the statement and its context was used, but I agree that we should get the information we need. And... And for a total of a $12 million project over a number of years, I just, I don't really see the harm in going back and thinking about it a little bit further. Essentially, if you put it in context, it's about one-fifth of our entire general fund budget. That's the size of this project, about $12 million out of a $50 million general fund. I'm just throwing it out there that what's a couple of days just to consider something of this magnitude? Thank you.
Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to echo Alderman Mason and Alderman Doyle, Alderwoman Doyle's sentiment in this. I'm very much in support of this project, but I, I struggle with a $5 million expenditure that we, that we walk on. I'm just uncomfortable that it, it just doesn't feel right. And I, although I think the sentiment is all the same, we want to get this thing moving, I, I just feel that we owe it to ourselves and certainly to the citizens that we do the due diligence, that, you know, we send a $50,000 contract back to Public Works and we're, we're walking a $5 million project through tonight. It just doesn't, you know, I, I echo Alderman Mason. A couple of weeks is not going to keep this thing from making it in the, on the radar. I think we need to, to deal with it accordingly. Thank you.
And we'll go to Charity Doyle. Bonnie Peterson.
This might need to go through proper channels, but I think we have Public Works up here, and I think they're all eager to move it ahead if I read their, what they've said correctly. And so if that's the case, I think we should just go ahead and vote to move it on tonight and see if it, if it goes tonight or if it doesn't, because I think all the Public Works people want to vote yes on it tonight. Thank you.
Cameron, you've been waiting patiently. Would you like to speak?
I just wanted to clarify a point, that the staff is not asking to move forward with building the project merely to move forward with selection, engineering selection. And, and we, there will be an RFP, and then that RFP will have to come before Public Works and Council. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you, Cameron, and I'd like to say just a few words, and that is, normally this would have gone through Public Works Committee, and it wasn't ready by, by deadline, and I asked it to be put on tonight's agenda so that we, I felt this was important enough for the entire council to hear the presentation. I completely agree that there needs to be scrutiny, and I think there'll be plenty of opportunity for scrutiny when the RFP comes back. Right now, we're not spending. Right now, we're, we're authorizing to seek proposals, and that will come back to Public Works very soon. So hope that the council will strongly consider supporting this tonight. I believe this is exciting in terms of the vision of our community as we move forward. I realize that we are in tough times. I think that's all the more reason to have a positive vision and to move forward with this important project for our community.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, if I heard Pauline correctly, we have, we're not going to be able to actually act on this for a couple of years. Was that? Could you clarify for me, please?
The $4 million is readily available at this point. If you wanted to take additional funds from the revenue bond, the additional $3 million, if we don't use it for Jackson Springs, that is what we will not know for two years. So that money is kind of off the table for a funding source for this program or for this project, but we also have identified additional funding through the Point 1-6 program, and I know some of the council people have brought up connection fees at that, and that is what the Point 1-6 would do. It would allow us to collect from other housing developments or houses that want to join on, or if there's a sanitary district that wants to join on, we can assess some connection fees if we pass a resolution later. But right now, our focus was to get the funding lined up so that we could move forward with this project if, if the costs came in where they're projected to be, and then later recoup some of those costs through other means.
Okay, one other question. I don't know who it'd be directed to, Sam. Is it, how typical is it for us to just go outside of Public Works and, or our legal and finance and, and walk something like this on? I'm just curious, just, I don't have the experience you do.
It's, it's been done before, and typically in, in situations where, you know, the entire council, where, where it's felt that the entire council should hear the proposal at the same time, but I understand where you're coming from.
Any further discussion? The motion is to approve. John Roberts.
This is something that's been talked about for a while, quite a while, and it's something that's needed to be done for quite a while. I think there's going to be pretty strong support on the Public Works Committee over this. We've talked about it before. It's a pretty big priority if we can find the money. Growth in Rapid going that way, we need to have that not only for the airport, but for the growth going that way. But, you know, we can't say enough about the fire safety issue at the airport, knowing firsthand what kind of problems that can cause. So it's something we really need to think about, and I don't see where it's hurting us any to go out and seek proposals. It's not costing us any money. We have an idea of what it's going to come in as. You know, if we can do it now and save the taxpayers money over doing it a year from now, two years from now, I think we should get it done, get it over with, and in the long run, it's going to save us money. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? The motion is for approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no. From Alderman Davis. Item 77 was moved to after executive session, so now we have our public hearing items 78 through 102. Do we have a motion to open public hearing? I'm sorry, we... I apologize. We had 76B. Sorry, Jerry. You have the floor.
I've been waiting all night to talk about meeting two senators and a congressperson. Well, on the, on the more serious side, last week I had the privilege of accompanying the mayor to our meeting in Washington, DC, and there were three areas that we discussed. And number one was the Pine Bark Beetle epidemic crisis, whatever you want to call it, in the Black Hills. Anyone that's been up in the hills have seen the cancer spread of that and the fire danger and all of that. It was brought up by the Forest Products Association that was with us, that there are approximately 1,500 jobs in the Black Hills related directly to the timber industry, which in the planning I've been involved with equates to about six, at least six spinoff jobs. So there's about 9,000 jobs riding on the timber industry in the Black Hills. And if you figure that's, that's about a, the job equivalent of half the population of Rapid City or households, it's a lot. It's huge. It, it would also impact the, or the environmental visual context of it affects our attractiveness as a tourist destination. It potentially will affect our water quality, air quality, especially water quality if we were to have a significant fire and have a lot of erosion. So we met with the Forest Service. We met with their officials at the Forest Service headquarters, and we also met with the executive council, a lot of the president's side, to discuss how we could expedite, or how they expedited, how they could expedite the process of approving timber cutting and harvesting, and that is apparently the big issue. We have the infrastructure to do the harvesting and so forth. It's a matter of what's called NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act, process that they have to go through before they allow a timber sale or timber cutting to occur. And the discussion was primarily, how can we expedite that? And one comment was that we should look at the incident command system, where the Forest Service could expedite the process by utilizing other agencies and, and putting a little, put it in high gear versus, because it is serious, very serious. And, and they've taken that under consideration, and hopefully they'll work on it. It was a united front. Also, we met with the Department of Energy and the National Science Foundation to discuss SURF, the Sanford Underground Research Facility. I've learned a new term the last week. And Department of Energy is assuming, or being asked, as I understand, to assume the basic contractual operation or funding of the facility, and the National Science Foundation comes in with the science projects. And there's some concerns and so forth as to how well and how fast that will occur. Dan Nelson from...
Tom.
Tom Nelson from, excuse me, from Lead, the mayor, did a wonderful job in explaining the, the support for SURF and what used to be DUSL from Lead and Rapid City, the entire area, and the importance of it to our economy. What was really interesting, at the National Science Foundation, it kind of ties in with some things we're talking about in our environment or our economy, the, one of the lead physicists brought up the fact that their job is to find the brightest and research scientist-type people and get them involved with basic scientific research. And this is the stuff that produces the things that we take for granted, like cell phones, GPS, and things like that, that evolved through research years ago. And they're saying, this is how we, as a nation, have been able to be a leader in the world, and our failure to fund this basic research will ultimately cost us in our leadership role and our ability to produce and lead in industry and science. We followed up with it, and each, each one of our members of Congress, Senator Thune, Senator Johnson, and Congresswoman Noem, all three expressed support and concern for both these issues and anything they could do, and I think there was very, I think some very fruitful discussions. We also had an opportunity for those that had not been around the National Guard Headquarters in the Pentagon, they had a tour and met our own Ray Carpenter, who was from the South Dakota Guard, who's now the acting director of the Army Guard, and they got a chance to learn about the Army Guard and its mission and so forth. But I think it was an excellent example of how travel and experience can expose us to things we need to know, and contacts that we made that I think are going to help us as a community to anchor our, some of our basic industry. A very good trip, and thank you for taking me along. And I think we need to stay on these two projects, hook, line, and sinker, because they are very critical to our well-being economically and socially. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wright. Do we have a motion to acknowledge the report? Motion by Doyle, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We're now on public hearing items 78 to 102. Do we have a motion to open public comment? Motion by Roberts, second by Mason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have some speaker request forms. We'll first go to Eric Hykes from Destination Rapid City Advisory Board, who would like to speak on 81 and 82.
Eric Hykes, a downtown business owner, downtown resident. Thank you, Mayor. Clarification, that's the Main Street Square Advisory Board that I'm speaking on behalf of, not the Destination Rapid City Advisory Board. Very simply, these two items represent positive, resource-efficient, and timely use of, of this council's time, and it is just what we spoke about during the budget. It is help this group help themselves and, and revenue generation. So very briefly, that's all I have to say. I support it.
Thank you. We'll now recognize Dan Tribby, who would like to speak on 98, 99, 101.
Thank you, Mayor, and council people. I'm Dan Tribby, represent MHL LLC, who, we are the people who are renovating the buildings and, and putting in for these conditional use permits, and I just wanted to make everyone aware that I am here tonight to answer any questions that, that anyone might have, so I will be available. Thank you.
And we'll recognize Dan Steffner on item 102.
Thank you, Mayor. Dan Steffner, President of Destination Rapid City. I just want to state that Destination Rapid City as a board is looking forward into the future and is looking at 2013. Alderman Sasso, we have addressed this issue. We will be voluntarily decreasing our city subsidy account in 2013. It is something we have discussed as a board, as a committee, and we understand the, the city government, and we understand the use and how it is and how it works. So I did want to bring that to your attention. I also wanted to just urge the approval of 102 for the conditional use permit for Main Street Square for minimal use, as we will be using it and as, and as is deemed necessary as operations. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you, and we have one final speaker request form from Eric Hykes on 102.
I'll echo my former comments on items 81 and 82 for this item as well. It's also efficient use of, of the time and resources, and is help them help themselves.
Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak on items 78 to 102? Okay, the public hearing will remain open during this time. We have our continued public hearing consent items 78 through 79, unless there's somebody that would like to remove on the council, would like to remove either of these items. Could we have a motion to continue both of these items until October 3? Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Items 80 through 97. Anybody like to remove any of these items 80 through 97 for separate consideration? Oh, I'm sorry, we now, we now need a motion to close. Motion by Davis, second by...
Peterson.
By Peterson. Thank you, Bonnie. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Consent hearing items 80 through 97. Would anybody like to remove any of these items from 80 to 97 for separate consideration? Pauline's assumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would actually request that items 81 through 84 be continued until after 102, until the appeals can be heard, and then also number 94, I just wanted to pull that one as well for clarification on that.
Okay, any additional items? Seeing none, could we have a motion to approve 80 through 97 with the exception of 81 through 84 and 94? Motion by Brown, second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Could we have a motion to continue 81 to 84 till after 102? Motion by Roberts, second by Peterson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we're on item 94. Charity Doyle, could you read this in the record for us?
Item 94 is Cold 45 Entertainment LLC doing business as divas and rock stars karaoke nightclub at 826 Main Street for a, they want to retain an on-sale liquor license transfer from Tady LLC doing business as Teddy Sports Grill, 826 Main Street. I'll yield the floor.
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When, if there is a motion on this to approve, we need it to be effective as of October 14th, 2011. That is when they're actually closing on the, on their agreement.
Motion by Davis and second by Peterson. Have this be effective October 11, October 14, 2011. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're now on non-consent public hearing items, items 98 through 102. Alderman Brown, 98.
Thank you, Mayor. 98 is appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on a request by MHL LLC for Dakota Soda Company LLC for a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a restaurant located at 512 Main Street Suites 120 and 130 in a private courtyard. Yield.
Okay, we do not have a motion. Alderman Nordstrom.
Mr. Mayor, I may need some help on this, or assistance with this motion, but it is essentially, what I'd like to do is deny the appeal and confirm what the Planning Commission has brought forward to us. So that'll be my motion, is deny the appeal.
Your motion is deny the appeal and to allow an on-sale liquor establishment... Your motion is deny the appeal and to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a restaurant at 512 Main.
Second.
Is that correct? Okay. We have a second by Peterson. Any discussion? Bonnie Peterson.
I will make a comment on all of the, well, I'm going to just say it once, but it applies to all of them, is that there is a concentration here. There's no getting around that. But I think the downtown area is where you would want a concentration of these kind of businesses as opposed to in neighborhoods. So, anyway, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will echo Bonnie's comments. I will be supporting this appeal. I think this is integral to the progression that we all want to see happen with the downtown area, and I hope that the rest of the council will support it as well. Thank you.
Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I should have held the floor. I apologize. The reason I'm not supporting the appeal or, in essence, denying it, is essentially to kind of clarify where my position is at compared with 7th and Indiana on that instance over there. That particular, so it makes it looks like I'm not being consistent, but however, I feel I am being consistent on this issue, is that staff has made the recommendations very clearly as to why we can support the downtown conditional use permit. Essentially, the main difference between the two is the buffer area for 7th and Indiana is not consistent with this area. So, the staff has recognized this area as being satisfactory for a conditional use permit. So, that's the reason why I am trying to separate the two issues out based on the buffer and the whole host of other reasons, but that's the primary issue. I want to clarify that if it appears to be inconsistent, I'm still consistent with what staff is recommending. So, I'll support the denial of the appeal. Thank you, Mayor. Yield the floor.
Just so we can make sure we're all on the same page, and Charlene or Tamara, correct me if I'm wrong, but the motion on the floor will allow the on-sale liquor establishment license at 512 Main? With stipulations.
We needed to clarify that this is just approval of the conditional use permit, that it isn't an approval of the liquor, or the license itself, the alcohol license.
So, this is to approve the conditional use permit? And it's to deny the effort to deny, basically, we're moving forward.
It's a prerequisite to having a liquor license.
We're denying the appeal and allowing the conditional use permit. Okay. Are we clear? A yes vote, a yes vote is to deny the appeal and allow the application to proceed. Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman Sasso.
And just to clarify, it is allowing the conditional use permit with the stipulations stated by the Planning Commission. Correct? Question mark.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Everyone understands the motion?
Excuse me?
Alderman. Go ahead.
We're, we wanted to clarify that you need to approve it with the stipulations as a It's going off. Okay. That the motion would be to approve the conditional use permit with the stipulations that are in the record.
Okay. We don't, we don't, we don't need, there's some confusion here. We don't need a motion to deny the appeal. By offering a motion to approve a conditional use permit, in essence, the appeal is being set aside.
Correct.
Was that your motion, Richie?
And that was, and that was Richie's Nordstrom. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 99. Charity Doyle. No, I'm sorry, was it?
Go ahead, Gary.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Gary.
Appeal of the Planning Commission's decision request by MHL LLC for Dirk and Ethan Incorporated for a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a restaurant located at 502 Main Street Suite 100 in a private courtyard. I yield the floor.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Peterson. Everyone understands? Alderman Nordstrom?
Thank you for clarifying it. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield the floor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 100.
Appeal of the Planning Commission's decision request by MHL LLC for Dakota Thyme LLC for a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a restaurant located at 502 Main Street Suite 200 in a private courtyard. I yield the floor.
Motion by Davis and second by Peterson to approve the conditional use permit. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 101, Alderman Brown.
Appeal of the Planning Commission's decision request by MHL LLC for Fat Boy Incorporated for a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a restaurant located at 510 Main Street Suite 200 in a private courtyard. I yield the floor.
We have a motion by Davis, and we have a second by Roberts. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 102, Alderman Brown.
Appeal of the Planning Commission's decision request by Destination Rapid City for a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment located at 526 Main Street. I yield the floor.
We have a motion by Davis and a second by Peterson to approve. Any discussion? Alderman Sasso.
This is, this is something that, looking at, actually, let me, let me stand corrected. So, on this, is this also for the liquor license or just for the special events yet?
This is just for the conditional use permit. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now, we have items 81 through 84. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts to approve items 81 through 84, which are alcohol licenses. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Bill list.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have, in addition to the bill list that is posted, it would be to Rapid Construction Company for the Florman Street Water Main Reconstruction Project for the change order number 1F in the amount of $2,478, thus bringing the grand total of the bills to be paid at
Motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And Tamara, we have an executive session. Regarding the contract. So, the purpose is for discussed pending litigation and contract issues. Do we, we have a motion to go into executive session? We have a motion by Roberts and a second by Mason. Alderman Nordstrom?
Yes, Mayor. If I may ask the question, which, which subpart in the executive session that allows us, we're using, am I correct in saying that we're using 125-2? Is that correct?
The subpart that allows for contracts and litigation.
Yes.
Just want to make sure. There's two specific subs that allow for discussing contracts and litigation. We're, both of those.
Very good. I just wanted to be sure that, help the Rapid City Journal figure out which, which reason why we're using the executive session. Thank you, Mayor.
That you got it figured out.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're in executive session. We have a motion to come out of executive session. Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I do now. We just came out of executive session. Tamara, would you identify for us the motion that?
The motion is to authorize Public Works to proceed with testing on the Jackson Water Treatment Plant project, testing for the pipes.
We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Pauline says no.
Yes.
Alcohol licenses.
We have a motion to acknowledge item 77. We have a motion by Peterson and a second by Roberts. Pauline, would you like to speak on 77?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so you are aware, we have been served with a lien on the Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant. One of the subcontractors on the project has not been paying his subcontractors, and it is my understanding that the contractor, the general, will take care of it, but until then, we have to withhold payments to make sure that we can cover that amount, so.
There will likely be follow-up at the next Public Works meeting. All in favor to acknowledge, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Brown, second by Peterson. Do adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.